Okay, good evening, everyone. We're calling to order the July 11th meeting of the Southborough Select Board. And Mimi, do you want to call your meeting to order first? And then we're just, we'll see if there's any public comment before we go into the continued tree hearing.
I call the meeting of the Southborough Planning Board to order.
Okay. The first item on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody who wishes to speak to an item which is not on the agenda to offer a brief comment. Hello? I don't have my computer up. Oh, okay. Hi Patty, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I have a very quick question for you. Twenty-three months ago, when the paving schedule, paving process was put out and things were prioritized, there was some questions about Parkerville Road and when that was going to be paved. And in talking to some of you guys back then, I was told Parkerville was on the priority list. And the last time I looked at the schedule, which was probably a week or so ago, it still says "M." that it's not scheduled at all. I did get the memo that they're paving trottyer, I think this week or this weekend or something. And I'm just wondering, what is the status of paving Parkerville Road? I think it's kind of an embarrassment to the town, and it really should be done while school is out. Are you sure?
I don't know, but we can look into it and then get back to you.
It's definitely on the list.
Okay.
I didn't have a key card.
I said, I don't know, but we can certainly look into it and get back to you. Sam, do you want to speak to this?
Andrew, I think that's part of the current paving project.
Yeah.
That is now being done this summer here. I don't remember where it is on the list.
There is a list of, you go to this road first, and this road second, this road third.
That's on the list, so the expectation is that will be finished this summer by the current paving contractor.
Has that list been updated in the last week or so? Because the last time I looked, it did not have it scheduled. It was on the list, but there's no schedule to...
But she's right, it should be done during the summer because of school, so we should check and see where it is.
Okay. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Patty. Are there any other public comments online? Seeing none. Ms. Luttrell, I'd like to hand it over to you to kind of set the stage for this continued tree hearing.
This tree hearing was continued from June 20th, 2023, because there was additional information requested. And since that time, last Friday, there was a walk with arborists, several members of the planning board, I think at least one member of the select board. So I will ask those who were in attendance for that walk if they, you know, wished to reconsider their vote or make any changes to the vote that was taken.
Thanks, Mimi. Yeah, so one, I want to thank National Grid and the Arborist Cliff who came out and met us. I think it was extremely fruitful from a knowledge base. One of our concerns, or one of my concerns, was it was very difficult based on the arborist notes regarding the defect or condition listed on the trees that were town trees, public shade trees that were being asked to be removed. And I think there was a list of thirty, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, twenty-four. I had about fourteen that I really needed to understand and appreciate, and I think the tour was extremely valuable for that, and I will be reconsidering my vote. Or we're creating a new vote.
Jesse Stein, member of the Planning Board. I was not in attendance for the walk. Do you guys have any changes to your plan?
No changes.
Okay. I mean, I'm in support of the plan as submitted.
Debbie Demiria, I don't plan to change my vote on principle. I think that once the votes are taken, they are considered final, and so I don't plan to change my vote. Thanks.
Thank you. I thank National Grid, I thank the town arborist, well, the arborist that the town uses Cliff. It's always very informational. I was not at the last meeting, but I do plan to support the removal of these trees based on the feedback and the walks that were done.
So a vote to reconsider would have to be moved by either one of the two that voted against the prior motion, so either Marnie or Debbie.
I make a motion to reevaluate the vote taken. Is that the right reconsider? I make a motion to reconsider the vote taken on the National Grid plan for tree mitigation.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Luttrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, no.
Brashio, yes.
So then we would need a motion.
So the motion is for the Planning Board to approve the National Grid Hazard Tree Mitigation Program as submitted.
Second. I have a motion, excuse me, in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Luttrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, no.
Brashio, yes.
So we are all set. Anything from the Select Board?
Okay, so I think it would be good if, just for the record, then in one seven minutes, there's a record of both boards' positions. So is there anyone on the Select Board that is going to reconsider the vote that they took before? No? Okay.
I do have one comment. I went on the walk as well, and I agree that although those trees have serious problems, and I appreciate the patience that you gentlemen have shown. I did a calculation. The town owns a lot of right-of-way. How much do you think it is? It's over 220 acres of right-of-way. 220 acres is about 25% bigger than Chestnut Hill Farm. That's how much right-of-way we roughly own. About 30% of it is forested. That comes to more than 30,000 trees. Those trees grow every year. They grow on average of about 3,500 tons of new biomass every year. That's dry biomass, by the way. And so we are talking about removing somewhere between 50 and 100 tons. So we're only talking about removing something on the order of 2% of the new growth in one year, and this is a sort of a five-year process. So I think, I think this process needs a rethink. It seems like it's too fraught and painful for what should be, I think, a, we ought to let the arborists do their job.
Okay, so I move that the Select Board approve the removal of the 24 trees as originally shown in National Grid's plan.
Removal and pruning?
Removal and pruning, that's right.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, so it carries from the Select Board, too. And should we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, yes, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the Planning Board public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, Luttrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiri, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Now we need a motion to adjourn, Mr. Stein, before you run off.
[laughing].
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Luttrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demiria, yes.
Brashio, yes.
Thank you.
And so I move that the Select Board also close the public hearing, but the tree removal?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is we have a poll hearing for 79 Walker Street. Mr. Purple, could you please read the notice of the public hearing?
The Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing Tuesday, July 11th, 2023 at 6:30 PM, McCalliff Hearing, yeah, I'm sorry, McCalliff Hearing Room, the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. Consider a petition by Mass Electric Company, National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated to install underground facilities and conduit on Walker Street. The meeting may also be listened to or viewed by the public through a link located at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings.
Okay, and do we have someone from National Grid here that would like to make a presentation?
Mr. Galvin is...
Okay, can we please bring him over?
He's there.
All right.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Galvin.
Oh, hi. Sorry about that. Yes, I see the town of Southborough was doing some repaving on that road, and it looks like it's, they wanted it, according to the comments, untouched for the next few years, so for future underground services to House 7 and 9 Walker, they want to put this underground conduit and handhole in on that side of the road, ahead of the road being finished.
Okay, and is there anyone, any, before we go to questions from the Board, are there any butters that are in the online audience or here that wish to speak about this? Any questions from the Board?
I just make a comment. This looks to be just underground activity, so it doesn't affect my usual question about sidewalks, so I'm fine.
Do we have, I guess, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the, how should I phrase The installation of underground facilities and the conduit on Walker Street as requested by National Grid.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? And I move that we close the public hearing for the poll hearing for 79 Walker Street.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right, we are right on schedule for [laughing].
Briefly.
For the 1618 Meadow Lane poll hearing.
The Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023, 6:35 PM, in McCalliff Hearing Room, Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, to consider a petition by Mass Electric Company, National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated to install underground facilities and conduit on Meadow Lane. The meeting may also be listened to or viewed by the public through a link located at www.southboroughtown.com/remotemeetings.
Do we need to open the hearing then?
So, Mr. Galvin, I assume you're here for the...
Yes.
Okay, for the same, for the Meadow Lane matter, would you like to give a brief description of what you're looking to do here?
Sure, it's similar, this for a few, a new service to number 16. The, they wanted to present the city to have underground wires put in. I guess it's related to a new poll job out there for new poll installations. This may be the one, I drove out there not too long ago, this may have already been paved out there. I'm not sure if it was this one or Walker. One of the roads is already done, but it's similar, bringing the underground conduit for services to feed that, that home for a new electrical service.
And anyone here wishes to speak to it? No? Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Same comment as for the previous one, for me.
I move that the, we approve the installation of underground facilities and conduit on Meadow Lane as shown in the hearing notice for the 1618 Meadow Lane poll hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. That approves, that is approved, and I move that we close the public hearing for the 1618 Meadow Lane matter.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Urbani, if you'd like to come forward at this time, and with Chief Newell is here as well. Chief, do you want to kind of begin and introduce Frank?
Should we wait for Kathy? Okay.
Make the introduction.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to talk to you. I'm here tonight to request that the Board appoint Mr. Frank Urbani to the open position of police officer with the Southborough Police Department. We had advertised for a lateral transfer to fill an open position that we had from Officer Kevin Landry retiring, and Mr. Urbani, along with multiple candidates, was interviewed for the position, and Frank rose right to the top of the list. We had interviews with the sergeants and lieutenant, and then the chief, myself, and the town administrator. So Frank is a post-certified police officer with over 26 years in the profession of law enforcement. He has been a dispatcher, a patrol officer, and is currently a sergeant with the Welsey College Police Department. He brings a wealth of knowledge and experience with him to this new position that we're hoping that he can fill. He's been through a host of specialized training to include active shooter, crowd management, sexual assault investigator, rad instructor, and diversity and sensitivity. He is also certified EMT. So he was appointed as the coordinator for the Welsey College's Community Policing Outreach Program, and during his background check, we spoke to the chief and the deputy chief, and they described Frank as, they stated that he is a constant community engaged, constantly in community engagement, and he, they stated that he was a hard worker, a self-initiator, and he is a helper. So Frank is here if you have any questions, but again, I'm just requesting that he be appointed to this open position. Thank you.
So, Mr. Urbani, would you, you got a very nice introduction there from Chief Newell. Anything you'd like to add, or just tell us a little bit about yourself and what attracted you to the town of Southborough?
Well, kind of a funny story. I recently endured a right hip replacement, and just before, just before I went out to have that surgery, I worked, I've worked part-time in Ashland as an auxiliary police officer turned traffic officer. About a year ago, they discontinued the auxiliary police force because of the police reform situation, but the reason I had gone to Ashland was because I noticed that Welsey was starting to go in a different direction. They were doing less community engagement, and, and that genuinely is what my passion is in the, in the police field, is engaging the community, building trust, and, and just having constant dialogue and conversations about difficult topics. So that's pretty much what I did at Welsey College, but as I saw, our, our rules were reducing because of the, you know, the national climate and so on and so forth, and certain, you know, people and leaders at Welsey College thought it would be a good idea to have the police interact less, and I thought that was the exact opposite of what we should be doing. I think we should be doing more, like overly more, to prove to the public that, you know, we are a positive resource, and, and I really truly believe that. So I was working the details through Ashland in Southborough, I ran into Lieutenant Sean McCarthy, and I just got talking to him, and, and I asked him if he was the chief because he was wearing some gold pins on him, and he said, oh, he goes, in fact, he goes, in fact, I'm a newly appointed lieutenant. And I go, oh, congratulations. And I go, do you like working in Southborough? And he's like, why you ask? And that, that was the beginning of what brought me here today.
Right, well, he is a goodwill ambassador.
Yeah. He's definitely sold the police department. And then from that point forward, I started like tuning into Facebook and, which I don't really, I dabble, but I don't really engage on Facebook, but I started looking at Southborough, and I was looking at, you know, the officers visiting the old folks' homes and, you know, and schools, and like, that's my shtick, my shtick, you know? That's something that I will enjoy doing going forward, you know? So I stopped, I started visiting officers on details, asking questions, and here I am.
All right. Well, you got a chance here to meet the five of us. Mr. Hamilton, you want to begin?
Oh, I'm Hamilton, I'm, this is the new beginning, the, the more, the people who know what they're doing are at the other end, so.
So I'll join your group. Thank you.
I only had one question for you. The Southborough Youth and Family Services likes to do a lot of outreach into the community about mental health issues, so they might be a good point for you to contact with.
Sure.
Which, because it's ongoing, as I know, a lot of the calls that police answer are mental health emergencies.
Yes, I have lots of experience with mental health calls at Welsey College.
I bet you do.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm Marguerite Landry, I'm also new.
It's a pleasure to meet you.
Anyway, thanks, welcome aboard.
Thanks, I'm Sam Stivers, I've been on the Board a little longer than these folks, but not too much. Sounds like your background is excellent, and it's great to have somebody who's actually been through all the training programs and so forth, so we don't have to wait for you to go back through whatever the required training is. So you hit the ground running, and I think this is a great function. Community outreach is something that I don't think we can do enough of, actually. So it's a great fit here, and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, welcome. I like what you said, I like that you met Sean McCarthy, that's great, so good for him to, to recruit you, and good for you to do the due diligence that you did. And I agree with Sam, I love the community outreach background that you have. I also have great faith in your chief. We have just a lot of respect for Chief Newell, so if he recommends you, that is absolutely good enough for me.
Thank you.
Yeah, and this, the Facebook outreach that you're mentioning, that's really, a lot of credit goes to Chief Newell for, you know, engaging with the community and letting everyone know about it, so welcome, and I think you're, we look forward to working with you, and I move that we appoint Frank Urbani as a full-time police officer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You got your whole family here? So the next item we have on the agenda is, we have two appointments to consider to the Community Preservation Commission, and so this was a later addition to the agenda, and let me just explain here. I had a conversation with Ben Smith, who I think is the new chair of CPC, earlier today, and just reviewing kind of the whole situation here. So as of right now, there are actually, this is a nine-person committee, of which there are, after June 30th, there are only four appointed members, so there are seven designated appointments, one member of Historical Commission, Mr. Farrington, one member of the Housing Authority vacant, one member of the Conservation Commission, that's Mr. Smith, one member of the Planning Board, Ms. Brashio, one member of the Recreation Commission, Kirsten...
Leval.
Leval. And Open Space Preservation Commission seat is currently vacant, one member of Shopsey, that's vacant, and then there's two at-large positions. So, and I think these are one year at a time, appointments for one year at a time?
No, there's, yeah, they're staggered, I believe.
Oh, they're staggered, okay.
So that's five that are seated?
No, there's four who are currently, so currently there's no at-large, no Shopsey, no open space, and no Housing Authority. The only four that are on are Historical, Conservation Commission, Planning, and Recreation.
Yeah, they're three-year terms.
Three-year terms, I'm sorry, it's right in front of me, okay. So, with that said, I got an email from Mr. Smith recommending the appointment of Brett Peters, who I think a lot of us know, to be an at-large member to Shopsey. So you'd like to come forward and just briefly, you know, explain your interest and...
Yeah, so I heard there's opening, and, you know, the last few years, I've been looking to get more involved with, you know, helping out in the town and doing things, and CPC, you know, has a number of things that, you know, I do a lot of stuff with open space and preservation, but the other, you know, recreation, community housing, and historic preservation, those are all things that, you know, I guess I have a strong interest in, and I'd love to help out in that area, being part of the CPC and, you know, you know, continue to be part of helping out in town.
So one thing that is actually down on our agenda, something we've been trying to work on, is making better use of the affordable housing bucketed money within CPC so that we can actually use them and make, have an impact. And I had very good product discussion with Ben, who just came in, about ways that we can work together to try to clear some of the current backlog and make sure that we can actually use some of those money. So I certainly hope that you would support us in that endeavor. I think there's definitely a way we can make sure that no CPC monies are used for in... I think there's definitely a way we can make sure that no CPC monies are used for ineligible expenses. They're used for purely for affordable housing. But I think we just, as a community, got to work better together to try to actually move forward on this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's super important, so I would love to be a part of that. I'm not an expert in the, you know, community and affordable housing area yet, but I would love to dig into that and help out and move that forward as, as the best we can.
Kathy?
So the interest of full disclosure, I know the Peters family very well because Brett's lovely wife is my longtime office manager, who is fantastic. So I am glad you're doing this. But let's get into the kind of nitty-gritty for a minute as far as the buckets that CPC has to manage.
Sure.
So this board unanimously has, we have a lot of goals for this year, but one that we really, really are behind is trying to do something about increasing true affordable housing in this town. Very little's been done the last few years for a variety of reasons, but we really want to start seeing projects done, not just talking about true things done, and of course, it takes money. The money comes into the, from the CPA, the 1% surtax, right? And then it goes into the various buckets based on what the, the law says, and then projects come forth. But what Mr. Denny was saying, there is a way to at least streamline the affordable housing piece of it by, instead of going through the town meeting process, putting the money directly into the Affordable House Trust Fund. So we're going to talk about this tonight. We've got that on the agenda. We've got some, some answers as far as, so I'm hoping Ben can actually stay, if he could to hear this piece of it. So that's important to us. Affordable housing is really, it's the most underutilized bucket that we have. We found a whole lot with the other buckets, but not with affordable housing. So I'm just saying, there is a real sincere desire with this board to appoint people to the CPC that really are going to roll up their sleeves and, and try to find projects that will bring the ability for more people to live in this town. Okay? And I fully support your appointment. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
I guess I concur with Kathy's comments, and obviously, we've seen Brett before, we know about him, and so I agree. Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering. You may regret it at some point, but anyway, I have no questions. You're under the...
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering, and better luck next time. Keep at it. It took me three times and took Sam...
Four.
Four. But who's counting?
I did.
Yes, I guess I am counting. I want to echo the, we have money in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that has languished there for nearly a quarter of a century.
Right.
It's, comes both from CPC and from developers as mitigation payments. And we need to turn that, that money is losing value every year. It's buying less and less affordable housing. And, you know, because it's, we're not making inflation on it, and so it's kind of a scandal. So I'm very interested in things that involve hammers and nails, and less interested in things that involve permits and studies. And so I would encourage you to, 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 to join me in that area, and I'm sure you're going to do a great job.
Okay. Thank you.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So I make a motion to appoint Mr. Brett Peters to the CPC for a term that ends, help me?
6:30, 25.
6:30, 25?
26.
26.
Six, okay. Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. You now got a call. All right.
Make sure you get sworn in. All right.
Well, there's Jim Haggerty, he's right there.
One-stop service. Yes.
Ms. Zinski? So there was a vote of CHOPC last evening?
Yes.
To appoint Mr. Zinski to the CPC under the bylaw. There's a member of CHOPC who is designated for a term three years. So I'm certainly familiar here. I don't really have any questions, but, or maybe I'll take that back. I do have a question. You know, you've heard everything you said. I know that you've been pushing for this, too, to try to get these CPC affordable housing monies really going and moving and into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So again, I hope we can make real good progress on that very soon.
I'm right there with you.
Okay.
So I actually don't support this appointment. As I said with Mr. Peters, we are really trying to get some work done, some projects done that create affordable housing. Ms. Zinski has been part of CHOPC for quite a while, and I don't think it's been a very effective group for quite a while. We had a meeting, a joint meeting in March with CHOPC that was one of the most disappointing meetings I've been to since I've been going to meetings in this town. It was a really bad look for the entire group. I've never had people call me for, after a meeting like they did that one, as far as what happened. It basically turned on, rather than focusing on the substance of what we were trying to do, which is create an affordable housing unit, Five Courtville Road, it devolved into nothing more than a gripe session. So it didn't get done. That house, we remember, we might not have gotten it done, but we certainly didn't do much to make it look like we were trying to get it done. So I don't support this appointment. I want to find someone who represents CHOPC that really is ready to roll up their sleeves and get something done, not just move the money over from, from CPC. I think we're going to make great strides with that tonight. But I'd rather have someone that I think is going to be more effective in that role. Now, I've got a question. What was the vote last night to appoint Ms. Zinski? Mr. Hamilton, were you there?
I was not notified of the meeting.
Well, that's unfortunate, given you're a representative, so I'm not sure what happened there. So that is inappropriate. So I, I'm not going to support this appointment.
Oh, by the way, so the vote was 3-0-1, and there was one of, so there's four, one of extension was Mr. Zinski.
Okay. Ready?
Yes.
I guess I, I agree with Kathy in the sense that, as the board members have heard from me on several occasions, I thought that Ms. Brascio made a pretty interesting suggestion late in her term on the board, is that we need to rethink the way CHOPC is structured and the way Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee is restructured, to be able to put the money together with expertise on housing development, as a number of towns have done as far as, as, again, updating AFTC, HHT, HFC, whatever, and get people who have experience in actual development of housing there, and with the money that comes through from CPC and other sources to be able to actually get projects done. And I think that it's, it's pretty clear that the record of, of the town generally and CHOPC and Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee is not outstanding in terms of actually producing affordable housing. So I think it's time for a shakeup, and I'm looking for some new faces in there. So again, I, I don't support this appointment.
Marguerite, do you have any questions, comments?
No. I, I agree with Kathy and Sam that something needs to be done differently because it's been a long time without, without the, the progress that we've been hoping for. That's the only thing. So it may call for a different skill set than is currently on the, in the group.
The March meeting is the reason I'm sitting here, and I agree with Ms. Cook.
Would you like to say anything?
Absolutely. Mr. Hamilton was not at the meeting last night because I was not told that he was appointed and you're new representative to CHOPC, and I wasn't told that he was sworn in. So I can't invite Mr. Hamilton to a board meeting that I don't know he's on my board. So just for clarity, it may have been disappointing, but the communication lack came from the board selectmen. You did not let me know. That's not my responsibility to hunt down who your representative's going to be. So that's why he wasn't there. And CHOPC has worked very hard and very diligently to try to get affordable housing. We have done our HPP, our Housing Production Plan. We've worked on that. We got a grant to do our five-year strategic plan, and we are working towards trying to get affordable housing in this town. We've also done a study on 21 Highland Street that took 18 months, and the gentleman who put that together and worked on it did a great job for CHOPC. We are moving in the right direction to just try to railroad a project and just do something for the sake of doing it and spending the money. And it's not right for the town, is not the right direction we should be going. And you are very much entitled to your opinion, but I've worked very hard on CHOPC. So if you aren't happy, I don't know what else you want me to do. I can't pull affordable housing out of a hat, but I've worked very, very long and very hard on this committee.
All right. Just one thing, which is on my radar screen, which is about, do you know what the status of the one-stop application for the...
We have not heard anything yet. We are still waiting. There was an earlier amount of money that if we could, if we agreed that we could do something, get a consultant in by June 30th, then we were going to be able to do it. But for some reason, we haven't heard anything. We keep checking, but I don't know what's going on with it.
One of the reasons I ask is because on one of, it's basically like a, I know, I have had discussions with folks on the planning board, and I think I've also mentioned this at some CHOPC meetings about potentially working on a bylaw to make it, have a category of buy right accessory dwelling units. And I know that in the one-stop application that Sarah submitted, one of the things that was in that application was potentially, if we got the grant, was to use it to do a, you know, more defined study about proposed bylaws. So I've been kind of hesitating a little bit to go further into detail about that until knowing what happens with CHOPC, because why go forward and do something, you know, like without the help of an expert if there's going to be some, if there's a grant for an expert to look into that?
Right.
So that's something that I'm very interested in, want to be kept informed of just the status of that.
As soon as we know something, happy to let you know, but we, we have not heard a word. We've checked in, I think, five or six times, and there's just no answers yet.
Okay. All right. Are there any other comments here? All right. I move that the select board appoint Dorian Zinski as the CHOPC representative to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second for discussion.
Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? So the motion fails.
That's fine. One less committee. Thank you.
Do you, want you, want to come and, come to the microphone and just identify yourself? So...
Just to answer Kathy's question, I wish I could stay for that discussion. We have a CPC meeting scheduled for this evening. We're, we needed, we found ourselves without the ability to assemble a quorum. We had a couple of members choose not to be reappointed, and one of them, we weren't aware that was the case. So anyhow, mad scramble to get some appointments tonight. Obviously, we had hoped for two, but I think we'll have a quorum so that we can hold a meeting to, to meet with John Parent about a critical decision that needs to be made in the townhouse.
I understand. So can we catch up in the next couple of days? Because I think you'll find this interesting and informative, right?
Yeah. No, I, I'm thrilled to begin an actual dialogue between selectmen and CPC.
No, we had a very good discussion earlier.
Very productive one.
Yeah. And, and we all need to work to find new at-large members.
I think Ben's concern is just that there are regulatory, there are important regulatory requirements to make sure that CPC funds don't be used for non-eligible purposes. Of course...
And I agree.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is not going to use such funds for non-eligible purposes.
There's a report that's required to the state, so we're ready.
We don't want to jeopardize the state match.
Yeah. And I, and I understand that that's in progress. And I mentioned it to just Andrew in our conversation, you know, because the big thing that we want to be absolutely careful is, we don't want to lose our state match. If we get too far out of compliance...
Absolutely.
It could be withheld, or we could lose it for a year, and that would be hundreds of thousands of dollars. It would be disastrous.
Absolutely.
So...
But from our perspective, we sometimes need more flexibility to react to a situation where there's a property that comes on board, like there's a reason why this is the only, I believe, way that a town can acquire property without going through the whole town meeting process of a two-thirds vote, et cetera, et cetera.
Understood. The Affordable Housing Trust gives, gives far more agility when it comes to, you know, responding to an opportunity you see around the community.
Five Courtville Road, which is the property I was talking about, that we would consider would have required us to act much faster than a town meeting would have allowed. So that's a perfect example of why we needed to have that money sitting there.
But we have some other interesting ideas that don't involve Five Courtville, that also maybe get more bang for the buck, and we look forward to working together with CPC on those and CHOPC and...
Yeah, we've, we recently hosted a seminar with Mass Housing Partnership. We've held them in the past with Habitat for Humanity, as well as a DHCD circuit rider, to learn about projects that have been done in the Commonwealth successfully, and to learn the strategies, the techniques they used to bring these products to fruition all across the Commonwealth. You know, we, we learned 10 or 12 different examples where communities achieved a bang for the buck that's, that's incredible, 20 to 1, invested town funds versus the, the value in affordable housing. It's fascinating to learn about, and I think we've got some opportunities here in town to do that. But I understand also the drive simply to get affordable housing done because it feels like there's a lot of inertia that needs to be overcome. I think that's, that's a valid argument. I understand it.
We're getting a little off our agenda, but you can see how excited we are about this. But Mr. Hamilton is very familiar with how Habitat works, too. So we've got some expertise on this board as far as doing this.
Fantastic. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair's report. So update on St. Mark's Street Road Park project. So I'll kind of break this into three parts, right? I had been very, very excited about the prospect of appearing at this meeting and announcing that we have finally acquired this parcel. We are extremely close. As you know, at our meeting on the 26th, we approved the purchase and sale agreement. That's been countersigned. And pursuant to that vote, I signed the deed out to St. Mark's, which hasn't been recorded yet because we're waiting back for the St. Mark's deed out to us, which needed to be signed by three different St. Mark's representatives who are out of state. And as of today, these have all been signed or in various ways of transit to us, people, FedEx, et cetera.
FedEx, two FedEx.
So I am hopeful that by tomorrow, we will have the originals of these deeds, and they can get on record, which will be, and really, a very important accomplishment, I think, that it's taken a long time. So that's what that is. The road project, as you have seen, has not started yet, but it is imminent that that will begin and be finished this summer. And on the park project, I spoke with Greg Russell at VHB earlier today, and the bid package, which is based off of the plan that the working group worked on, and then the decision we made was to also add in an alternate bid for kind of more stone walls so that the whole park would be surrounded. So that was advertised in the central registry, registry, July 5th today. Documents were made available to potential bidders, and responses are due by July 22nd. So it'll be very interesting to see what responses we get. We hope that they are good, and so we're potentially even looking at acting on a response to the bid package at our August meeting. So we are making progress. Anyone have any questions or further updates?
So we've got one recommendation from the working group as far as the name, correct? Okay, so we should act on that at some point.
Marguerite, you want to speak to that?
The recommendation was, after much consideration, Southborough Heritage Park. That is not a chosen name, but that's just our recommendation. We felt that it included a lot of different cultures and times and peoples. We felt it was inclusive and also looked to the future a bit.
Okay, so that's something potentially we can work on, put on a next item on an agenda. It would be nice to stop calling it the St. Mark's Park after the town owns the park.
Pocket Park or whatever, yeah.
Because it sent the wrong message. Next chair's report. Our next scheduled meeting is August 15th. I know I will be, I have a scheduled family vacation then. Want to make sure it's okay with the board if we moved it up a week to August 8th. All right. There's a lot of nodding. With that, who is doing the members' report on the Mass Housing filing? Is it me or...
That might be.
It's done as a members' report. I don't know if... I don't know if, I mean, I can speak to it briefly if.
You're a member.
Okay. I mean, this is really covered by, the 120 Mass Housing filing is, we're going to discuss it further under other matters. But at, at our, one of our June meetings, Farris Development came, presented two 40Bs, 40B projects that they had engineered, and they were coming to us in advance of filing for Mass Housing, let us know they would be filing for Mass Housing, which I think all of us appreciated. And they have, in fact, they have filed for 120, and Mass Housing responded with a letter back to us. It was addressed to me, and it's been circulated. There's, well, we can talk about it, it's under 120, the substance of it, later, but 250, I do not think, certainly there's no site visit scheduled yet. There's no deadline on a response to a public comment yet. I don't know whether, I don't believe I've seen the filing with housing, with, with Miss Housing for 250. Definitely seen 120.
I think the filing just came out today.
Oh, okay.
And they are having the same date for the site visit.
Okay.
And the original date for public comment back was July 31st. I've made requests of Mass Housing to extend that to August 18th.
For both of them or just the first?
Well, for boards and committees to have time, it was for the first one. But when they sent out the new notice, it now has the new public comment date to coincide of August 18th. So that'll give boards and committees some time to actually meet and be able to provide any feedback, and we're hoping to get any comments from boards and committees back into the Select Board's office on or before August 15th, so we can try and collate everything and put it together as one packet back to Mass Housing.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to hand it over to you for Town Administrator's report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So one of the items I just wanted to touch on, really appreciate the board supporting the chief's recommendation this evening to, to appoint Officer Urbani as, as the new member of our police department. So tonight, you appointed him. Tomorrow is his official swearing-in. That is going to be at 11:30 tomorrow morning down at Public Safety at the 9/11 Memorial. Weather permitting, we'll do that outside. It's, it doesn't take too long. It's very nice. It's, and Mr. Heggerty will, will issue the, issue the oath, so if you are available.
That's the new time, correct?
That is the new time. That had to be moved, and so personnel boards at 9 and everything and that, so that allows everything to fall nicely into place, and I think as many people to attend as, as we'd be able to. The second item I have, we did, we did receive some comments back regarding the transfer station stickers and how things are rolled out, and when people actually apply, how it, how it works. And, you know, there were some redundancies and everything that were identified. And I, you know, want to acknowledge Tammy Rice, who's the business administrator down at Public Works. She did a great job working with, with the company to make these changes, and, you know, so that if, if you are renewing your stickers and your vehicle registration, you know, vehicle information is the same as last year, you don't have to re-upload your registrations again. You know, if you're renewing your stickers, last year you applied as a senior and all your information is the same, you don't have to upload registration again. If you're renewing your stickers as a senior, you know, you, you know, you don't have to, you know, show proof of, 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 you know, recent tax bill or driver's license. So we've streamlined those things an awful lot. I think the, the form this year for, at the board's request, has been streamlined in terms of people who are seeking waivers, and we have had a couple of those come into the office, I believe, too, so far. And Ms. Rice has also prepared a, an email blast that is going to be going out tomorrow, just alerting everybody about this information, and, and we'll blast that out on social media as well and that. So I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, we had the issues, we acknowledged the issues, and they were addressed, and I think everybody would be better for it, but, but it was Ms. Rice's initiative and everything in that to help with that. So I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, the work that she did.
I also think Kathy, you.
I just happened to be the first applicant, I think, and that's.
She was one of the people who applied and then solved these different issues.
Yeah, but I agree with Mark. I didn't know Tammy that well until, so she is a pleasure to work with, and she is really on the ball, so I, kudos to Tammy Rice, too, from me.
Absolutely.
But when you got your free sticker by mistake, did you actually go back and pay for it?
I did, indeed. They billed me the next day.
Good.
I don't think any of you. You're old enough for a free sticker or anything, so, you know, so.
I pretended.
The, I wanted just to let the board know, this just came from Mr. Parent today, so I figured I'd pass it along, an update on the LED streetlight conversion. He has been conversing back and forth with Bob Moran at National Grid, and Bob said Grid has begun the installation of the new lighting fixtures in town. So if you see some lights that may look different and everything and that, you know, things are changing, assuming that there are no supply chain issues, you know, we should be in good shape, you know, hopefully sometime over the next, you know, eight to 10 months, you know, we should be seeing the majority of those lights being changed over. Obviously, you know, the winter season may slow us down a little bit, but, you know, that is coming along nicely. And the last thing I want to do, I actually saved it for last. As you are aware, you know, we are losing one of our fire captains, and, you know, feel free to jump up, chief, if I step on your toes or if I do anything wrong, so. But, you know, the board has received, you know, we do receive notice, Neil Espezi is leaving the department. Last shift is July 24th. He will be taking on the position of deputy chief in Northborough. My understanding is that there is an emergency management component to the position, so that's right in Neil's wheelhouse. You know, Neil, you know, joined as a permanent firefighter in 2000, right? So he's had 23 years of the Department of Permanent experience, had nine years before that in call and auxiliary. He's, you know, he's done a lot for this community in helping us to move forward in terms of emergency management. If you've ever been involved in a, you know, with us setting up an emergency center during a storm or anything, or if you've even been involved in, you know, getting correspondence from a potential storm that may come, you know, Neil, that was his, that was his jam. He really enjoyed, you know, handling those things. You know, he spent several stints going down and, and serving down in the Caribbean, helping with disaster recovery and being part of units to do that, and, you know, and represented this town well. You know, really, you know, just want to say thank you for everything he's done for this community. I'm sure he's going to do great things in Northborough, and he's close enough that we can look over the fence and keep an eye on him. So anything you want to add, chief?
Good evening. The town administrator highlighted a lot of Neil's career. He will be missed. He was also instrumental as our prevention officer for a number of years, so a lot of our safety codes, a lot of inspections that were done, he was instrumental. His, we did have a correction. His last day of employment is going to be the 24th, but his last scheduled shift is next Tuesday. So if, if you want to stop in, you're more than welcome to. He deserves us, he's well-respected in the area, and he'll do very well. So we're very proud, and he, it's going to be hard to fill the hole, but that's our next process, so, thank you.
Can I make a comment, Andrew?
Absolutely.
One thing that's near and dear to me, I don't think anybody in town has done more to find grant money than Neil has over the years. He, in my view, is the champ.
That is something that will award someone to Sam's heart.
So that part particularly, I will sorely miss, but.
Especially for COVID.
That's right. Exactly. And many other things, too.
He did, yeah, he did, he did a great job. He and the town accountant made a nice pair in trying to make sure that we got as much reimbursement back in terms of, you know, FEMA and CARES and everything, so I was instrumental in that as well.
Sort of, sort of a not-so-obvious contribution, but something that made a big difference for the town. So you're right, he will be sorely missed. Thank you.
And I'll just echo what you said. I just briefly got to know Neil a little bit during the Strategic Planning Committee that you put together, that I was part of when I first joined the Select Board. And I think Neil's a great guy and got to know him from some of the events, you know, you've had in the Public Safety building, particularly really enjoyed meeting him a little bit more during some of the, Lisa Brodsky organized a great event when COVID kind of, we felt like, oh, it's completely over now. There was a great event that recognized all the people who had helped out at the vaccine clinics during COVID, and Neil was there and made some really great remarks. So I am going to make a point to try to make it down to just wish him the best, and I agree with you, I think he's going to be a great asset to Northborough, and wish him With that, you have anything else, Mark?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. So on the consent agenda, I've got some edits to the meeting. Do we have, I have some edits to the minutes of the meeting. Anyone else have any holds on the consent agenda?
G for me.
D.
G.
Table G.
I didn't, I didn't get G, I don't think.
Okay.
So if we get table G.
That's right, okay.
Okay, it sounded like there were a lot of holds.
D and E.
D and E.
So it's A, D, and E.
A, D, and E, okay.
Who held A?
I did. Okay. I move that we approve consent agenda items B, C, and F.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. On the minutes, Marguerite or Al, do you have any edits?
I have a few.
Okay.
Not, not major. On the 6th of, sorry. On the 6th of June, line 52, is that John Palmer or Joseph Palmer?
I think it's John.
It's Joe.
Joe.
It's Joe?
Joe.
Okay, so that's Joseph, and then the other one.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Well, let me just say this, it's Joe Palmer who's on Capitol, it's Joe.
Yeah, I don't.
No, he lives on, okay.
Joe lives on Parkerville.
He does?
Yeah. It's actually a couple, I know, I looked, I went to the NOSI book. Joe Palmer lives in Parkerville, that's on CPAC, it's Joe.
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I think it was him, but maybe.
It was John? Okay. All right. Then the other one is line 105. Let's see.
Down should be town.
Down, yeah.
Yep. And then 164, the, there's the word from, but the F is left off. And then 176, I think it should be boards and committees in the plural. Yep. And I think on 224, the word learn has been left out. I think it was just. Where, Marguerite? She's, on 224, she stated, it is important to the results of testing and does not want to assume any liability with this. No, that's not.
Or no, learn or no.
Yeah, yeah. That was the only ones I have on that, on that one.
I've got a few on 66. Should we do them on each meeting?
That's 66.
Yeah, I've, I've got a few for 66, yeah. Should I do those now, Andrew?
Well, right ahead. I've got, I've got one, too, but.
Line 38, a but with one T. Line 94, participating in. Line 103 should be flag school. And line 105 is town and flag school. I think you had town there. And that's it for me for.
Okay. That covered the things. Kathy, do you have some?
No, I got mine.
All right, I have one, which is. Lines 195 and 196 of the June 6th meeting referring to Mr. Miller's comment, where it said expressed his frustration at the misrepresentation that he did not want to participate. I would say that is, at what he described as the misrepresentation that he did not wish to participate. Okay. With that, I move that we approve the June 6, 2023 minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? The 12th, this is really more of a planning board meeting than a select board meeting.
Yeah.
I did see one edit.
I have two.
Okay. Why don't you go first?
One question, should we not note at the front of it that also attending Jay Tallerman Town Council, because he is referred to in there, and to me, he's an important participant, so I would add him to that. And same thing for 626, actually. And then line 36, missing words, should be .5 mile radius.
Al, Marguerite, do you have any? Okay, this one, this one is against, against our self-interest, but just to make it accurate.
No, no, stop.
51 says, Ms. Lutrell discussed, stated she would like to discuss how the planning board could avoid undue influence on projects that are solely under the jurisdiction of the planning board. It should be the Select Board, right?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that was the intent of it, right?
Yeah.
Wait a minute. What, what?
I don't think so.
Really?
No, I think she means what she said.
How, how the planning board could avoid undue influence? Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
She means exactly what she says.
All right. Okay.
They were interested in us not interfering.
Okay. I move that we approve the June 12, 2023 minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? June 20 minutes?
A couple.
Okay.
One, STANTEC, line 15, misspelled, S-T-A-N-T-E-C. And line 271, it's Cindy Foster, C-I-N-D-Y. That's it for me.
Okay. And for me, I think on line 60, is that how you spell Rob's last name? I think it's with O, with an O instead of S-E-N. Do you agree? Right?
That looks weird to me, so I think you're right, but I may be wrong.
So I think we should correct that name. And on lines 258 to 260, this is describing the motion that was made for the flag policy. I didn't go back and compare this to the exact policy that we posted, but I know that when I put that together, I listened to the audio of that repeatedly, just to make sure that it's exactly correct. So we should make sure that.
It's correct.
It's correct? Okay, perfect. I move that we approve the June 20, 2023 minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? And we're ready to consider the June 26 minutes?
Yep.
Any, any edits to those?
I had two.
Okay.
One, the same comment about Mr. Tallerman at the top, I would say, also attending Jay Tallerman Town Council. And this doesn't have line numbers, but in section four, near the end, Ms. Cook's comment was reversed, and that she had said that, asked for a revote because she would not like title insurance. I think that's what you said.
Or was it, I don't remember, but, or could it have been that at the bottom? Did I move that we just get title insurance without talking about the?
No, you, you moved, you moved that we get it subject to a $500 limit.
Okay.
And then Mr. Hamilton, I think, voted against that.
That's correct.
And then Ms. Cook asked for a revote.
That's right.
Because you changed your position originally, and you wanted to vote again, so the final vote was 3-2-0.
That's right.
So it's just a, Ms. Cook asked for a revote as she would not like.
Not, yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve the. I move that we approve the June 26, 2023 minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor? So we are now completely caught up, right?
Except for, and we can't forget this, once July 24th comes and goes, we've got four sets of executive minutes, okay, so.
August minutes will release.
Okay. Other than that, yeah, we are.
This is, life, life with five proofreaders is difficult.
I know.
Not like the old days.
Yeah. So Marguerite, there's, I think she, Marguerite is gonna quickly compete with Sam.
Uh-oh, Marg, no, Marguerite's way out of my class.
And her friend Judy Betts too, so.
Way out of my class.
Yeah.
We'll just have to, you're a man of nature.
Okay, who wanted, who held approval of interdepartmental transfers?
I did. Because I think this is a good news story too, and I just wanted to not pass over it, and I'm not peremptive. So, did everyone look at what, so first of all, let's make this clear, there are no reserve fund transfers at all for fiscal year '23, zero. Okay, so that whole $180,000 will go back into free cash when that gets closed out. And for a $55 million budget, look how paltry these are, and most of those are Select Board ones, as a matter of fact. So look at this, I mean, there's nothing here, at all. So I just think this is totally, totally, kudos to, to the County Department, kudos to the process that we have embarked on as far as the review goes. So I just think this is worth championing.
Yep.
So, that's why I held it, that's the only reason.
And I'd expand on that, but I think this actually has roots back in prior board, recognized by Ms. Malinowski for her efforts to look more, in more detail at that financial tracking process and the reporting and overview process that she started, I think is a strong reason why we're in this position. So great that that is in place, and hopefully that will continue going forward, because I agree, this is a remarkable outcome for this kind of budget.
I agree with that. So Al, Marguerite, when we have our financial audit, the, we had a new auditor last year, and he came forth, and he basically took a look and said, you guys were amazing. When they did the testing, there was not one exception to the, you know, they don't look at everything, right? They test. And so they test on, you know, the sampling, and not one exception did occur, so they just gave us rave reviews as far as the county, the finance department, what they saw, et cetera. So we really do have a very solid financial department in this town, so they, they all deserve, and Ms. Malinowski, kudos.
The auditor seemed somewhat disappointed, actually. He said that that was the only audit he could remember without an exception.
Yeah.
Pretty remarkable.
I've been on it, it's no fun.
Oh, yeah, me too, and I get exceptions.
Okay, so that was it for that one.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to basically approve the interdepartmental transfers for fiscal year '23 as listed on our sheet.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Why do you hold rescinding the public comment policy?
Because, do we want to do that before we decide what we're gonna do with a new, do we want to rescind if we don't have a new one? We're fine to rescind. See, I thought we'd already rescind it, Mark corrected me. So I'm fine doing it, but I just wanna make sure that we may not be approving a new one.
Well, we don't, that's right. First off, we don't necessarily even need a public comment policy.
Agree.
But we, we, and between the SJC decision and the Baron case and that, we have not enforced the old public comment policy because it has been deemed unconstitutional. And it's just, I've been advised that we should take the official act of rescinding the unconstitutional policy.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanna make sure we discuss it, knowing that we may not be adopting a new one.
I agree, and also that, I know Mr. Litt raised the point about the timing of when we consider this, I don't necessarily agree with the point he's making, but I'm certainly happy if there was a little bit of more time to consider it. And I think one of the points you're making is like, so for the benefit of Al and Marguerite, this is something that we started to do in the tail end of the last board, because the SJC decision came out. I just don't remember the sequence, it came up at at least two meetings, but apparently we didn't actually take the vote to rescind it. And I remember we never, we came really close to finalizing a new policy, but we should discuss it again, since we got two new members.
But is it a problem if we rescind and then don't vote for a new one for another meeting or two?
I don't think so, but I just wanna make sure everybody knows that's what we may be doing, so you know what's, so you may not have a policy replaced, it depends on what we do with it down here, and Andrew will explain for us.
I mean, the reality is, we, we don't have a policy right now-
That's correct.
-because the policy we had was unconstitutional, so, yeah, I, I agree, we should rescind the old policy, since it, it's a moot question.
It leaves us with some exposure, potentially, but-
It's no different, I mean, we, we don't have one today, because, so, and I think we're gonna have a lively discussion about the new policy, but-
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to rescind the current posted Select Board public comment policy.
Second.
Okay, so who for the minutes was the second, it was like three people second at the same time?
I defer.
Okay, all right.
So Marguerite seconded it?
She didn't.
Because Bridget has to know this, that's why I'm trying to repeat this, for Bridget's sake.
Okay, we'll just say for the minutes that-
Congratulations.
Sam seconded, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. So our public comment policy is rescinded. I think that has taken care of the consent agenda, right?
Mm-hmm, it does.
Okay, turning next to other matters. So we started to talk a little bit about the 120 Turnpike Road 40B application. The current status that they're in is they have an application to Mass Housing for a site eligibility letter, which has this kind of just very basic determination that the applicant owns and controls the site, that there's nothing completely egregious that prevents a, a project from being built on this site. And so we have an opportunity for public comment by August 18th, and that's because Mr. Purple reached out to Mass Housing, got a little bit of extra time from July 31st, so we've put this out to other boards and committees, so they have time to come back. You know, my general view of this is, and also having been part of, as three of us were, the process of the public comment letter on the Park Central application for site eligibility, you know, there's a lot of features of this that are really attractive in the grand scheme of things, that this is a site where the only ingress and egress is through Route 9, it's already part of an existing office park. We had the meeting where there was no butter opposition, there's really just the, geographically, it's unlikely to have any butter opposition. And we have a need to get to our 10% under the 40B law, and we've got a housing production plan, which is cause for us to generate 66 units by, I believe, 2025, to meet certain targets. So I, my own view is, I think this is something that we should express some support to, but I'll open it up for discussion. Mr. Stivers?
Yeah, I, I guess, I was impressed by the presentation, and I think this sounds like a very attractive project for the reasons that you suggest. And it seems to me that there, we've talked about the possibility of, quote, friendly 40Bs in concept, and this seems to me to potentially be something that could be interesting with that, to have something that, again, gets something for the town in terms of safe harbor, at least close to safe harbor, if not over it, and there's some discussion around possibility of increasing the size a little bit, I think, to do that. And again, with a developer who I think has a good reputation and seems interested in working with the town, so I think all the ingredients are there for a very successful project if we can work together on this, so I, I strongly support this.
Marguerite?
Yes, the same, as Sam has expressed, I'm, I'm guessing that sometimes Mass Housing gets comments back from towns that are more negative than what we would be doing.
Frequently, yes.
I'm just guessing that. So I'm, I'm thinking it would be very, very nice to write a, a letter of, of strong support.
Al?
I, I agree. I would like to arrange a site visit, and unfortunately, I'm not gonna be available the time, so perhaps there's some time we can do that at, at a separate meeting. One question I have is, so our, our date for posting the letter effectively is August 18th?
Yes.
And so we have one-
Getting, getting it to-
Oh, yes, yes. We have one meeting between now and then.
Yes, which we've just moved up a little bit.
Which we've just moved up a little bit. It does strike me that we should have some form of a public hearing on this at the August 8th meeting, just, you know, we're crossing Ts and dotting Is, if, if people want to make their opinions known, we ought to make an opportunity for them.
And what, what we did with, because we did this only about six or eight months ago, or a year ago with Park Central, is there were a couple meetings, there was, we picked someone to put together a draft that was then circulated in advance of the meeting, and then we had kind of a markup session at a public meeting.
But I think, Al, the point you're making is that we ought to get focused public input as part of that process.
Yeah, yes, absolutely, I mean, you know-
Hearing that's advertised as public, I hate to use the word forum, but at least active input from the public. And I, I agree with you, that we are unlikely to get a whole lot of butter participation in this. I've actually had a call from one Woodland Road resident asking what's going on with it, but my sense is, there's not a lot of, you know, opposition lurking out there at this point, but hope, I think it's incumbent on us to make every opportunity for people to participate.
And I think, like, the, the geography of this-
Yep.
So you go, you drive through that parking lot, and then it, where it's really closest to, right, is like the far back part of the, you know, up a hill, and then it's by, there's another office building, which is like deep into the site. You can't, it's harder to see from Route 9.
Yep.
True statement.
Okay.
Good location.
One, one thing I think might come up is impact on the schools, the school population? That's something.
This one's pretty small, though, compared to, to others. So let's talk about the calendar again. So if we meet on the 8th, and that's our public forum as far as last time we're gonna, you know, get comments.
Yes.
What date have we given the boards and committees to respond to by?
I think it's the 15th.
Of August?
Of August, 15, 16 to August.
Okay. So we should, you know, end up with a plan too, as far as getting the letter drafted.
Well, then how does that, so it would be ideal to get comments back from the other boards before we-
When's the site visit?
Because we're meeting a little bit earlier, right?
It's July 21st.
Okay.
July 25th is the site visit? So you want to give the boards and committees time to do that, right?
Yeah.
And then, so I would accelerate the boards and committees' response maybe by a week or so, so that on the 8th, we really have everything we need to write that letter.
Yeah, that, we're in the, the timing is a little bit challenging with summer, but I, what do you think, Mark?
I think that, you know, I think we can make that work. So, but again, if the board wants to, you know, provide all of their thoughts and then assign a scribe on behalf of the board to work with staff to get that put together, Mr. Hamilton, either is volunteering or has a comment?
No, I'm volunteering.
Okay.
So Al, I did the last ones, I'm happy to give you that one, although this is gonna be much different, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you.
So that night, then, we need to do the markup, so that it's really, because we're not meeting after that.
Well, this is gonna be, what I think, very different than the, okay, for Park Central, there was like a stack of-
Yes.
-comments like this thick.
Yes.
I don't think we're gonna get that.
I don't either. The planning board sent their own letter in, if I remember, separate from ours, I think we may include this, but they also sent it in separately.
I think, I think the boards and, a lot of the boards and committees' conservation as well on that, I think there were separate letters and everything, so yours will state your position, but it may incorporate some of the other comments that are also being provided.
So if we have to have a special meeting to approve, which we did last time too, by the way, that's how we did it. But I would say that if I end up knowing nothing new from what I know tonight, I'm with you, Andrew, I am so for this project. I think it's small, it's in a great location, and it may, on its own, get us over the 10%, it just depends on a couple things, right? But it might. But it's gonna get us close, even if it doesn't get us, get us over, so I see no reason not to fully, full-throatedly support this project.
So, so my suggestion is that if staff works with Mr. Hamilton on a draft letter for the board to have for consideration on the 8th, you're going to meet, you're gonna have people come in and have comments and everything and that, and if there's anything as a result of that that you'd like to change, I mean, I really think that you can do that, you know, you can make those changes at the meeting, and we can have that all set and avoid a special meeting if, you know, if that's possible.
And also, just to, to Marguerite's comment about schools, I remember I had an attorney friend who worked at Mass Housing, I remember there was Mass Housing where the DHCD, I mean, his perspective was, from the state's perspective, that's one of the, like, least convincing arguments they have on why to do it, is because they see it as just kind of a typical suburban argument, to try to stop affordable housing. But the, the bedroom mix that this project has is one that, and again, there's, there's a precedent of, you can look, I haven't looked, I don't know if someone else has, is how many stu, how many students did Madison Place?
Seventeen.
Not, not as many.
Out of 168, so about 10%.
So this would be smaller, and also, there's a good number of just one bedrooms in this, and I just don't think that, it's unlikely someone that is renting a one bedroom is gonna have a school age.
I, I think even a lot of the, the two bedrooms are going to be-
Yeah. And let me say this, Madison Place is full, so it's not like this, there's not a demand for these type of units in this town, even forget the affordable piece of it, there's a demand for rental units in this town.
Yeah.
There's a lot of older people that have sold their houses, big houses, and moved into Madison Place.
Yep. There was a lot of discussion route for the Madison Place project around bedroom mix and discussion, and again, the data that I, I saw suggests your point, Al, that three bedrooms does create more potential for schoolchildren, two falls off dramatically, and one, not much, so.
Yeah.
I, I think it's an issue that we want to think about, but to me, this is not a deal breaker at this level, certainly.
I think the studies also show when there's rentals, there's less children, when you're talking about a Park Central that is gonna be for sale, you've got a probability of more children when it's a more permanent place.
But I think the point, another, it's also relevant because, you know, we're also thinking about the NEARI building project, and one of the things that's frustrating is that for purposes of state funding, for how big that school can be, we can't count anticipated or projected enrollment from a project which is, hasn't yet been permitted but is in process.
Right.
So that's why I think we have a desire to try to maybe manage the growth which is coming.
What were the price points for the rentals?
It's actually, it's-
It's in the packet.
It's in the pa, it's-
That's what I thought, it was low.
Well, it broke it out between affordable and market rate, but for, so only 25% of the units will be affordable, 75% will be market rate, but under the DHCD, the 40B regulations, all the apartments count towards the subsidized housing inventory.
And affordable is affordable in quotes here, actually.
It is indeed, and we know that, so we still are gonna try to do projects that really are truly affordable.
Okay, so I don't think, well, I guess one thing we could talk about is who attends site visit, because we can't have three of us, 10, I don't remember how we did it.
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
10, we can?
Yeah, you just have to be-
Okay, just-
Get deliberate.
The muzzle. Okay, all right.
We did it for-
I don't remember how we did it, I went to the Park Central for a visit, who else was there?
I was there.
I was there.
Okay, all right.
But I, I didn't, I didn't see either of you there.
Lisa was there too, yeah.
Yeah, so we can't talk, but you can ask questions.
Okay. Yeah.
And we checked on that.
That was unusual, because it was standing in a parking lot, in a very hot August day-
And you couldn't see anything.
The sun just blaring on us, and blacktop everywhere, and having this whole presentation with the, you know, plans and everything. So hopefully there's cooler weather for this one, or bring a tent.
July 25th, I'm sure it will be.
So I noticed Planning Board responded back to Ms. Miller at Mass Housing and said that they would be, you know, they would have representatives in attendance at the site visit, so I will do the same, that the Select Board will have, have representatives there as well.
Okay. Okay, so I don't think we need to take any votes, um, but, um, so Mr. Hamilton's going to be our, um, author of the draft-
Yeah.
-letter, okay. Um, okay, the next item is the regional dispatch memorandum from Dyer and Lisa. Do you want to come forward and just, I mean, it's a very short memo, um, but if you want to add any other color on it, because as you know, we, um, in our goal-setting meeting, obviously, we want to try to make some progress, but want to get your perspective on, like, there's two issues. One is just the immediate need, and then there's kind of a longer-term goal of regionalization.
So we, the Chief Achilles and I had sent this memo, um, really wanted to discuss, you know, what originally prompted this idea was the fact that we needed some help with the ECC. It needed to be addressed, uh, safety, security concerns. Options were brought forward, one was fortifying what we had in place, the other was regionalization. We did the regionalization. Again, I wasn't a part of the initial talks, and Chief Achilles kind of took the lead on a lot of the stuff that had to do with regionalization. We went forward with that, with the goal of proving, you know, what we have in place, trying to find something that's going to be cost-effective, uh, safety purposes, and working with partners around, in our region for, in this local region, that would be a part of the regionalization. So unfortunately, it didn't seem to pan out. It didn't go through the town meeting, it was, didn't seem like there was a good, um, following for this position. And so Chief Achilles and I met after the fact, and we said that this is a problem that still needs to be addressed, uh, and we still need to work, we still need to move forward with this. So we started to, to look into fortifying, what it would entail to fortify what we have in place with our current dispatchers. And we started reaching out to area departments, finding out what they have in place, what seems to work. And right now, we are in the process of looking into that process. Sorry, I'm repeating myself. But we want to find something that's going to be a cost-effective, to compare the two, a regionalization or fortifying what we have in place. And, you know, like we said in the memo, it is our intention to make a presentation of our recommendations to the Select Board and seek community support at the next scheduled town meeting. If you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's, um, an important distinction that, um, you know, we were tasked afterwards that although there may be new support for regionalization, we haven't really had the opportunity to completely vet out what, what we need to do to strengthen our own dispatch. And I think also the memo looks at, a lot of work was done, um, with regionalization with some key partners in our area, um, a lot, about 21 months' worth of work. So if this, if we can't get support, um, both financially or conceptually on strengthening our own dispatch, then, um, our recommendation is kind of revisit that re-, that study, that report, and the opportunities that exist, instead of starting from scratch and looking at different regionalization options. So, um, we have a lot of work to do, we've been work, we've been meeting on a regular basis, trying to get some, um, concrete facts, how to strengthen our dispatch. And I think whether it's in October or in, uh, March of next year, we could probably provide that to you.
Okay, I have some thoughts, but who wants to go first? Kathy, you want to?
I'll go first. So thank you guys for being here, it's always a pleasure to see both of you. So I read your memo three times just to make sure I got everything. And I just want to, um, make clear now, you know, you've got two new members, right? But the previous five members that really took a look at it, um, actually unanimously supported the concept of regionalization. What we never did is compare what you're proposing to, which is what I think needs to be done, um, is do a real deep dive into, um, both strengthening locally, um, which obviously the local dispatchers want, versus some form of regionalization with all forms being on the table. You know, we really looked at one permutation, and I'm looking at you, Chief, because, you know, we will have our Foxborough discussion, but, um, we, we, we were pretty much there as far as convinced that the regionalization probably was the more effective choice, and probably should save money. But that's the right comparison, is what you would do locally to regional, not what you have now, because you know this has to change, right? And I think we're all convinced that something needs to give here. It says what, what that is and what it should look like, right? So we're still with you. I know you're probably just, you know, what happened at town meeting, first of all, that was an advisory vote, but, you know, it was late at night, um, and, you know, people, bringing people in just for certain votes, I thought what got said was absolutely wrong and inappropriate, just so you know. Um, it's a, you know, terrible way to end the, what was a pretty good meeting up to that point, um, but it is what it is, right? So we go forward. But, um, yeah, we're all, we are all ears as far as what you would propose, as far as what to do locally, then I think it's our job to work with you on the regional choices. So we're going to talk about goals in a minute, and I think that's going to get assigned to, um, you know, probably maybe two people, um, as far as doing that. So this, to me, is just a continuation of where we, we left off, so we're with you, we're going to get this done, um, and get it done right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Al?
First off, uh, you know, if I were sitting in your shoes, I'd probably be pretty frustrated too. And I, and I want to thank you for coming here and putting this four-square on the table, you know, so, um, I, first of all, I agree with you, we need to have, you know, we need to dig in and figure out, if we're going to do this alone, what's it going to cost us, and what's, what's the, uh, what's the performance standard that we would expect? And I agree with Ms. Cook, we have to look at all of the available options, um, to understand, you know, can, can we get an appropriate, uh, performance standard? And what is that performance standard going to cost us? And what is the business model? And I, I think, in my still fairly ignorant view, there, there seem to be two different potential models. One is where we're, which was similar to the program that was, that you guys had worked on, where, you know, we're essentially part, where we're governing partners, and one is where we're buying dispatch on a fee-for-service basis. And those are, are two different things. So we need to understand what the available, all of the available options are, and then compare them with going it alone. This is a big decision because, uh, in the last, I think, 10 years, uh, we've seen about a 10% increase in our municipal headcount. This would be the single largest headcount, uh, increase that, uh, this town has had in the 20-some-odd, sneaking up on 30 years I've been, 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 been here. So this is a big decision, and, uh, I think we need to assess all of the available options. I agree with Ms. Cook, you know, we're here to work with you to sort through what, what are those options, and put them all on the table, and figure out, you know, what the right, right decision for our community is.
Thanks.
I, I understand it's not clear what the best way forward is right now, but I think, I, I'd like to focus also on, um, educating the voters in town, uh, a lot before they vote on it again, because I think that was, it would have helped a lot to have more data beforehand, so I, I wouldn't mind helping out with that in any way that I can.
Yeah, we, we agree with that, and that's definitely a reason why we're doing this as well, so we can show that we're best. Sam, you want to?
Sure. Thank you, good to see you, as always. I guess I'm still at the same place I've been conceptually, in that long-term, the right quotes, regionalization is the way I think you have to go, just because of economics. And there are models out there that do work, and it is challenging, because there are a lot of models that don't work. So how do you sort through all of that stuff? But one of the things that's interesting to me is that, uh, even if we decide today that we wanted to go regional, there will still be an interim period, that I think we have to do a better job of staffing that function than we've done. And to me, that's an interesting thing to look at, and I, I appreciate the fact that you're looking around to see how others are dealing with this, so I've watched a number of other town committee meetings talking about this topic. I've talked to a number of dispatchers about those kinds of issues, and I think there may be some interesting interim, middle-ground solutions there, in terms of the fact that demand is not steady 24 hours a day, so how can you actually staff correctly at different times of day, different days of the week, et cetera, to have, you know, full-time and reserve capacity, et cetera, in ways that don't require us to just simply double the staff directly, which is sort of the brute force way, but even if you double the staff, you still have events that overload a double staff. And so the, the real issue for me is how do you figure out the fallback structure there to cover appropriate, significant events without having to full, full staff up there? So I think there are ways that we can deal with that going forward for the interim, and it may turn out that that's actually, comes out of that, a great model that we can afford, that would not mean the kind of impact that Al mentioned here, which would be a pretty substantial challenge to get support for. So I certainly appreciate what you're doing, I encourage you to keep investigating. And again, for me, if somehow, out of the blue, a really attractive regionalization option popped up, that's the kind of thing that, to me, is a long-term solution, maybe long-term enough after I'm long gone from the board here. But ultimately, I think you've got to, the economics force you to move in that direction, but that's not going to happen soon, so let's do the best we can, and I think there are some good solutions in there, and I appreciate your looking into that, and look forward to hearing what you find. Thank you.
So just, what I would add is, I'm also interested in, I'm thinking about, you know, in addition to the, um, what is the, um, staffing cost of strengthening dispatch, you know, also thinking about, um, capital, because I know one of the takeaway, one of the things that drove the regionalization study that happened over a long time before was thinking about, you know, we have a space in the public safety building that has all of that, you know, if you've ever gone in there, you go to the right, and there's just all this computer stuff, um, servers and high-tech equipment that, you know, in, in that industry gets obsolete pretty quickly, so that's one thing that'll be, you know, interesting, how that factors into this. And, um, a couple of meetings ago, we had a consultant who helps to identify grants for things on a long-term capital project. You know, one of the things she really noted right away is for, for emergency communications equipment, uh, you've got a huge advantage if you're regionalizing, and you're at a disadvantage if you're investing in your own place. I also, I think a lot about, like, Metro West rec after, and it still has, Westboro and Grafton, they applied for the grant. I'm just interested in kind of what happens next from there, do they actually go forward? Do they get the grant? Do they actually stand up the building? I think maybe even the, the tenor of the conversation might change a little bit if they actually build that building, there's people working there, you see that it's, um, as not as scary as people made it out to be before. We're probably a long way from here to, to there, right? But, um, just one thing to monitor for information is what's going on with Metro West, because we were on the altar with them, and then we jumped off, so you naturally wonder about the-
Were we on the altar or at the altar?
You know, what happens to them? And, um, you know, we can say we need information, we need information, we got, there was a lot of information put together as part of this other effort, but it's, it's still a lot of projections, because, um, it's hard, you know, the number of participants in any rec is always changing, and no matter what, I think we're going to have to make a decision that's based on somewhat imperfect data, you know? That the cost of making, it's easier to find out the cost than making the investment here, it's harder to project the savings that you get from regionalizing, you just have to make a decision, knowing that that's going to be, you know, somewhat imperfect. But one thing that I was just reading online last night that made me think of just the importance of this, is, um, the story of what happened in the city of Philadelphia, where there was this, um, really amazing incident. The city of Philadelphia is no comparison in terms of public safety challenges, but there was a, really an amazing, horrible situation that happened because of a dispatch error, where, um, there was an incident at, you know, north 42nd Street, but they sent them to south 42nd Street, and it caused this whole series of events, and it was awful. So I know that, you know, fortunately, we have never had an incident like that, but it really does underscore, you know, the importance of dispatch, and I know that that's one of the things you're focused on too, is-
Andrew?
Yes.
Could I expand on your technology point a second?
Yes.
Because I think that is an interesting thing. And I guess I look at technology as a, a separate issue from the personnel piece, and my view is that technology, in one way, is the potential for a sort of ultimate regionalization, in the sense that you go to the cloud for that kind of stuff. And there are, I've heard concerns that that creates risk exposure, et cetera, but there are public safety organizations who actually do use the cloud. And, and my day job, I'm in the healthcare business with a lot of sensitive data and the need for, you know, rapid response to calls about service and so forth, and I use Amazon Web Services. And I could never afford to pay for the equipment and the structures and the processes that they have, as new technology comes out, they get it, and they provide all the security beyond what, again, I could afford, what the town could afford, certainly, in those kind of situations. So I think there's an interesting possibility, say, let's think about maybe regionalizing or going to the cloud for the technology piece, that could save us, I think, a fair amount of money potentially, but we'd have to look at those numbers, and maybe have more people, and not go regional with people as fast, but do it with technology. So I, it, it would be interesting, I think, to look at those two issues as separate ones, and maybe there are deal killer elements of the technology going to the cloud that I'm not aware of. But again, I know that there are groups that do it, and if they can do it theoretically, then maybe it's worth looking at. So that might make it more economically feasible for us to keep the people in Southborough, potentially, so, interesting possibility.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
So, you know, one of the things, and I'll look at you, Chief, because you were more involved in the, the study and the whole thing-
Look at him.
Okay, no, I'm looking at you. But remember to, in this, you know, nobody could help this, you know, you started out with seven, then went to six and five and four, and then, you know, Hoppin dropped out, right? On a three to two vote. So then we're down, you know, then there were three, and that was the minimum you had, and that really did change the cost quite a bit, as far as what would have been the cost if you'd had seven in there, you really would have had a lot of more, um, of a base to spread the cost over if you had seven. So that, that was too bad, um, so that didn't help anything. But we've got to remember too, one of the things, now, we don't have to ta-, this is not a town meeting vote to do this, it's a, it's the Select Board's decision to do it. We should definitely involve the town, we should have, you know, hearings, et cetera, which we did last time, we had a lot of, you know, public comment. But we definitely should keep that in mind, as far as trying to appropriately convince, once we're convinced, convince the town that this is really the better way to go. You know, if we had started off being regionalization like California, that's got, what, 40, and you've got our, you know, the little tiny states got all we've got, you know, we wouldn't be having this problem, because people have been used to it to begin with. We've just got people that are so used to this local version, it's hard to change. So we've got all this pushback from our dispatchers, we've got to work with them too, to try to convince them. But we do have to make sure we answer the dark question, which we really didn't. We kept saying, oh, we'll, we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out, but that came up over and over, you know, that dark station, you know, you want somebody to be able to talk to the minute you walk in, no matter what time of day. So we've got to keep that one in mind too, when we get back to this, and we are going to get back to it.
Anything else you want to add, or?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, um, another thing that was a later addition to the agenda is, um, capital, I still call it the Capital Planning Committee.
Capital Improvement-
Capital Improvement-
Planning.
And Planning Committee. Recommendation on the Beta Group, and then I'm thinking, who should be the person to discuss this, it would be you or Sam or-
I'd be happy to defer this to Mr. Stivers if he was so willing. He's, he's been, well, like I said, this is, this is, this is an offshoot, just to tee it up, this is an offshoot of the discussions and the pavement management, um, uh, you know, program that, that the town has, has received through Beta Group. And this was another opportunity that was presented to us, um, in further discussions with Beta Group. Beta Group. And, you know, I will, I'll let Mr. Stivers speak to the particulars.
Okay. Thank you. We did hire Beta Group to do a survey of the road conditions.
Can I start? I think it might be useful just for Marguerite now, if you step back and just like pavement management system, what is it and all that stuff?
Okay. I have my 43 PowerPoint slides here, so let's go.
We were doing well on time.
Sorry. We are doing well, so that's-
Don't open the door, don't open the door. The issue is that we did a big paving project, and that's been in the works for a few years. Prior to DPW superintendent tended to save her state money and town money for paving because it's more economical to bid larger projects versus a small project at a time, so kind of thing. So that was coming, and the question is, how do people actually manage that elsewhere? And it turns out that there are a number of towns who use a more analytical approach. And so basically, they put a scanner on the front of a car and drive it around town. And they can either use photographic scanners, or what we did was LiDAR, which was a light-based scanner, to basically photograph the pavement condition for all the roads in town. We got about 70 road miles in town. And so they did that scan and they've got software that takes that information and then evaluates those road segments and depending on where you're going, road segments between like 10 feet long to several hundred feet long. Again, bucket those in similar category kind of things. So in fact, you find out what condition the roads are in, then it turns out there are probably nine or 10 different road treatments that you can do, all the way from removing the entire road base and surface and rebuilding the road, which is very expensive, that lasts typically 20 years or more, or a very light seal coating, which is inexpensive relatively, and it, again, extends the life by a year or two or three, something like that. So the economics for those processes are very well-known to the engineers. A lot of people spend a lot of money doing that many times over the course of the last 100 years or however long they've been paving roads. And so the issue is that how do you figure out how to effectively use your road budget? If you've got a million dollars, what do you do? In terms of the best economic solution? And it turns out that the traditional way to do that, doing that, the engineers describe as worst first. And so if you've got a road that's in terrible condition, then you go in and rebuild it and you look for the next one that's in terrible condition. And so you wind up spending a lot of money on a small number of roads. And it happens that you can actually model that analytically for an optimization model. And what you want to do is you want to rate your roads on a zero to 100 scale in terms of condition, and there's a very specific technical rating system they use for this. And the mathematical equation that you use is you want to say, how can I improve my overall average road quality index for all roads in town by the most amount if I've got to spend a million dollars or $2 million or whatever? And that answer typically is you do a few of the worst roads, but you do a lot more, relatively speaking, on maintenance in a variety of ways. And one maintenance that's cheap is you, there's a treatment coating that you can apply, you spray it on, it restores a lot of the oil in the original asphalt. And you do that three or four or five years after you repave a road. That has a significantly positive effect that is inexpensive and you get more mileage, more bang for the buck out of that kind of process and waiting for the road to deteriorate. And so it's a pretty complicated math problem, but it's certainly solvable. And so what we've done is we contracted with the Beta Group to go around and do the assessment, which they did. There's an interesting report out there, if you're interested in it, be glad to forward that to you. And we-
We've got a grant for this, right?
Yeah. That was, I think it was-
Community compact grant?
Compact grant, yeah, compact grant. So, and as they did that, we also have actually photographic record of, in addition to the LiDAR, photographic record of driving around town. So the DPW can now access that data file and basically drive around town and look at the roads and sidewalks or whatever as that car drove around town, which is great. Google Maps does it, but that, the Google images sometimes are several years old, so we've now got a very current version of that. And so one of the questions that they, the things they proposed originally was, are you folks interested in doing sidewalks? And at the time, we didn't have the funds to do that. But as we looked at it more and we thought about things that the, now, Southborough Public Access Committee, the former ADA Committee is doing, they've been a lot very concerned about sidewalks and curb cuts for sidewalk, street crossings and so forth. And so the Beta folks said, look, we've got the basic data now, it would be relatively inexpensive to actually add the sidewalk analysis here to be able to figure out, are there places that we ought to think about investing more money in sidewalks and in terms of access to sidewalks for pedestrians? And the sidewalk money out of ARPA, which we've got about $700,000 now plus for new sidewalks and what, like 50, 50,000 bucks or something for? Hundred for-
Actually, 100.
Yeah, for sidewalk repair. And so it seemed to make a lot of sense to have a better tool for determining what we want to do with that money for repair particularly, if not construction of new sidewalks. So Beta actually has a group that lives and breathes sidewalks in this world of specialization. So you want to find somebody who actually has a lot of experience with it and who really cares about sidewalks, because the road guys care less about sidewalks typically. And so it seemed like a good way to think about how we spend that money, not only near term, but think about it from a longer-term capital perspective to say, here are the things that are in the pipeline. And for the ADA stuff, we have our ADA self-assessment, which has got, you know, approximately a million dollars' worth of work, or probably more, that we're chewing our way through as we reasonably can. If we can add the sidewalk issue to that, in addition, it is more pedestrian as well, just general sidewalks, plus pedestrian access, plus ADA, et cetera. It seemed to make sense that that's a great tool. And so the Capital Improvement Planning Committee looked at it, they were supportive of the pavement management piece as a first step, and they've looked at this and think this is a good idea as well. So, and we actually were able to negotiate a little better price for this as well, so it's good news there. So again, it adds to our analytic toolbox. And at some point in the future, maybe every five or 10 years, you want to go back and do another scan to see what's happened. But Arlington did this about 10 years ago. They claim they're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in terms of pavement management by doing it smarter with this kind of technique. So pretty interesting technique, and I think it's a great opportunity to get better decisions about how we spend this money.
I have, I got some quick questions.
Sure.
Okay, so of the $700,000 bucketed ARPA to sidewalks, I mean, I thought that's about like not fixing existing sidewalks, but putting-
New sidewalks, that's correct, absolutely.
So this is, the Beta's software would not identify places for-
It will not, but, but the Beta sidewalk folks, I think, could be helpful in terms of a discussion around that.
Yeah.
So I would, I would certainly work to engage them with a discussion if you guys have done this.
I mean, I'm going to support this because, you know, I think CIPC is doing a good job of working towards the ultimate recommendation for, but I, one, I still, I'm open to spending more than $700,000 on-
Me, too.
Sidewalks. I think it's going to be pessimistic about how far your dollar will go, you know, given all the engineering costs and everything.
Oh, yeah.
And I just hate to see more of the $700,000 being used on studies and engineering cost instead of more just building. But we, we can deal with that later.
But Andrew, I do think that we have opportunity for some brain picking here of Beta-
Yeah, yeah.
-in terms of where we spend that 700, frankly.
Okay.
And for example, there's some, there's some, I think, very interesting possibilities. We've got neighborhoods down off of Southville Road, subdivisions that have great sidewalk networks in those subdivisions, but there's no connection between them. And so if you look sort of to the north end of those subdivisions, you might think, and the town owns property between those, so you put a sidewalk-
I think I know one, I, and I think I know one you're thinking of.
Yeah, you put a sidewalk between those connections, you double the linear distance that neighborhoods have access to run, walk, bike, push strollers, et cetera there. So people who look at that network from an overview standpoint, I think, are likely to have some interesting ideas.
For the brain picking, is this, is the $50,000, is it just to do the computer study and, or is it, are they also available, they're professionals, well, so if you call them, they pick up the phone and help you?
I'm hoping they will be able to do that. That was not part of the specific, the Beta guys actually were very helpful, very informative on the pavement management thing. They're not, is my impression so far, is that they're not out to, you know, watch the meter and say, sorry, your time is up, I'm not going to talk anymore.
And I think Bill Kondaf during his interview, is familiar, he's used the software before?
Yep, he has, that's right. So, and again, it's not perfect. And Bill Kondaf, our new DPW superintendent, made the, made the comment that several other DPW superintendents I've talked with said that you use the model, but you also save some money aside because there's always something that comes up where somebody needs something done that doesn't quite fit the model, that is a good thing for the town to do. So you don't want to, you know, use all your money there, but at least it's a great guide in terms of being generally in the right direction and you always have the opportunity to override it and make, do something that makes sense.
I think it's terrific to use the algorithms that they have because now it's sort of, people are saying, all the sidewalks are in the middle of town.
Yeah.
Why don't they put them near my house? Or all the sidewalks should be around the schools, or all the sidewalks, people have ideas, but it's not backed up by anything.
Well, and like the road, the pavement management thing, it makes it sort of more objective, less political, in the sense the model says we do this, it's not just who can make the most noise about a particular piece of road. And that, that sort of goes into the process, but that's not the final.
But the ARPA money was specifically recommended to build new sidewalks. And so, and this is almost 10% of it. So that, I didn't think it's a lot of money. This costs more than the pavement management system.
I don't remember, I didn't think it did, did it? How much was it?
I think so. Anyway, well, I may be wrong, so, but anyway, boy, but you're right. We're not going to end up with all new sidewalks for $702,000. But it's a start. I still think we need to consider bonding, you know.
For sidewalks.
We've asked capital to come back with a recommendation to put sidewalks every place we need them in town regardless of what the cost is. And then we pick what we want to do, just like we do the roads. And so I still think we ought to consider down the road, bonding all the roadwork, bonding this, so we really end up with a really nice set of improvements to both roads and sidewalks and not this little bit, little bit, little bit that we do. So that's just an aside, that's another, another discussion. But boy, I hate to see 50 of the 700 go just to, and not come back with a specific recommendation as to where to put new sidewalks. I want a new sidewalk on my, my neighborhood.
Okay. Now we get down to the-
I've had a lot of experience buying tools for engineers, and most of it's been pretty positive. And I, I'm with Kathy, I'd rather spend the money on asphalt and concrete, but $650,000 isn't going to buy a lot of sidewalks. It's not going to buy the sidewalk we'd like to build on Pine Hill Road, I don't think. But we need to make a start. These are the sorts of tools we need to invest in because labor is expensive, capital is cheap, even at the, at the current rates. And we need to make the workers that we have as productive as possible. So I think this is a productivity tool. And I think it'll, I think it will pay dividends, though we'll probably never see the cash.
And Al, I think your point is a good one, and it seems to me, and Kathy, that the real cost of this is substantial if you actually did it right with sidewalks, which is another reason we had the conversation with our grants consultant, and that was one of the points that was on that conversation. I think there is a fair amount of money out there for connectivity, is the way that they often describe this. And if we can put the right proposal together, there may be some interesting sources out there to augment that money.
That's a good point.
Well, I think Andrew ought to lean heavily on his friend Senator Eldridge to allow us to use CPC funds for side-
Well, that would mean then he would need to lean on like a lot of other people.
That's right.
Except that a lot of people want to do that.
Well, he's, he's now moving up in the seniority ranks, isn't he?
No, he seems pretty sure of himself. I'm in no-
Yeah, I've got great confidence that he'll be able to do this. I've got great confidence in Andrew.
One other just thought, you know, about like sidewalk maintenance. We've had a couple examples where, you know, residents who live in subdivisions, you know, and then the sometimes, because the, you go in older neighborhoods and there's not sidewalks. You go into newer, these newer subdivisions, because the subdivision approval process, they require sidewalks. So you get sidewalks, some of these places where there's just not as many pedestrians. And I think it, I've just had the experience walking around in some of these newer subdivisions. I don't even use the sidewalk, I just walk kind of on the side of the road because it's actually feels, there's, I don't feel unsafe doing that. So I just, hopefully, I mean, so this is gonna, this tool is also going to be scanning all of these sidewalks and all of these, you know, subdivisions where there might be some routes coming in through the sidewalk, but it doesn't have as much impact of-
There's liability there, so.
Yeah. All right.
A lot of moving parts for this.
What we really want to do is take care of the sidewalks that the people use the most.
Right.
Right. Or build ones that people will use.
Or things like near, around schools, for example, that's one of the prime drivers.
Absolutely.
So we should invite Andrew over to walk on Pine Hill Road with us.
Yeah, send him from your house up to Callahan.
Yeah.
Well, but there is one particular place where I think really would be a good bang for the buck for the sidewalk, which is completing the Richards Road sidewalk, because Richards Road from Finn School ends at 85. And then there's the short section of Richards Road that goes from 85 to Woodland, short. That's not, so like, you know, that's where people, you're walking like in the street and it's a pretty, so that's an example.
Busy road.
Yep. So you need a rating system somehow to evaluate, yeah.
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 Yeah. Now, we, we have Beta on, as sort of our general engineering consultant, is that correct?
VHB.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Beta thing is very new.
Okay.
Beta did the pavement management, and then this is, so this will be the second time we've dealt with Beta.
Someone want to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve the CIPC quest to hire Beta at $50,000 to provide the sidewalk analysis.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. It is approved. The next item, I think, is yours, Kathy.
So I'm going to provide a little history, too, for Al and Marguerite. So as everybody knows, one of the buckets that the CPA surtax goes into is affordable housing. A few years ago, the town meeting voted at three separate times, eight, nine, and 11, to transfer the funds that were in the affordable housing bucket to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that was created, I think, I don't know, 20 years ago or so. The members of the Affordable House Trust Fund, as everybody knows, is the select board. We're, we're required to be on it, and then there were two other people, Shopsi had a rep and, and Bill Bowlin, I guess, because of, I'm not sure. So there were seven, there were seven people in, right? So that got done. In the meantime, as Al alluded to a minute ago, once that money got put in, and it did in large part, they just didn't transfer the whole thing. So there's still some laggard money that's sitting in the CPC affordable housing bucket that we're trying to get moved over. So that's the purpose of what I'm trying to talk about tonight, is how to get that finished. So we've got all the money we can in the Affordable House Trust Fund, right? Right now, between the Affordable House Trust Fund and what's in the CPC affordable housing bucket, there's about a million dollars. So the process to get it all moved over is a little bit cumbersome, which Mark knows after conversations with Jay, but we're trying to at least get what got approved at town meeting finished moving over. A big chunk of it is. So, so far, they've moved over, to date, 300 and, I'm going around, $55,000 of money from the CPA affordable housing bucket to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Today, we've got in that about $240,000, right? So some of it's been spent. We've also had other money come into the Affordable House Trust Fund, like Al said, for mitigation. Brendan Holmes had 100,000 bucks they put in it. And then it started off with 178,000 that someone had contributed to the town for affordable housing. So it started off with a seed of 278, CPC put there 340 in, and then we've bought some houses over the years, right? So it's either sitting in houses, or it's sitting in this, or it's sitting in the CPC affordable housing bucket. That's the three places where we have spent affordable housing money, right? So it's, this is pretty simple. Carla has done a beautiful spreadsheet that just has rolled it forward all the way through from the very beginning to now. I've got that in front of me. What we've got to do, it's not reporting to CPC, we've got to file a report with the state that basically does, lets the state know what's in this bucket, what's in the Affordable House Trust Fund and where it came from, how much came from the CPA surtax and how much came from otherwise. The only issue is, so follow my math, let's say we had, I'm making these numbers up, we had $400,000 that went into it in total, and let's say we have 150 left at this point, but CPC put in 300- but CPC put in 300, and we got 100 from something else. You know, what's left? You know, who, is it FIFO? Did, you know, what did you use first? So I've got, Carl and I are going to work this. We're going to do something to make some assumption as far as what's in there. And I, I think the assumption is, what's left is CPC money, right? And that will probably make them happy, yeah.
It's a conservative view.
And that'll make them happy, right? Say it's all there, so we know that we've got to follow the rules with what's in there as far as...
Is there interest that's generated?
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is part of the funds. There's a big chunk of town money that's invested, truly invested, not just sitting in a bank account earning interest. So it's invested in the investment program, which is, CPC might be mad at me saying that. Another reason they won't hold on to it, because there are an income on their piece of it, right? And, you know, interest rates are up, investment returns are, have been pretty good over the last 10 years. So they've made a whole lot of money on the investment program that the CPC extra funds are in. I mean, a lot of money. So, that's another reason they would prefer, it probably stays there, and, okay, that's fine. We probably would if we were in their chair too, but there's just no reason for them to say no to this. That's why I'll talk to Ben Smith, show him the report from Carla, and it should be as simple as filing the report, and they should then say, um, the rest of it comes over. The rest of it was about 111,000 from those three articles. They've moved over most of it. Um, not sure why they moved over what they did. You can't, you can see that there were projects that happened in those years, and maybe that's why they moved it. They knew we really had projects that needed to be funded, but it doesn't match perfectly. Uh, but that's probably why they did it, and, but why they picked the numbers, because these are all, you know, there's pennies on these things. Um, so, there's about 111,000 left in the CPC accounts that was previously approved by the three town meeting votes that should be moved over to that. Then, we've got to go year by year at town meeting, at least so far, Jay hasn't figured out another way to do it, and try to keep moving it over. Right, Mark?
So how much will we have once that final piece is moved over now roughly?
Well, you will have 240 plus 111, so about 350, 350.
Another thing that I think complicates it is that on each annual town meeting warrant, there's the CPC articles, right?
Yes.
But those are presented by the CPC, right? So, if we drafted them and sponsored them, we would say, and to approve, that the affordable housing bu- bucket go directly to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, no other questions asked, right? But then, I think they would want to have some other, um, you know, strings, or they would consider them protections, and we've just got to work that out.
Which we could amend, try to amend at town meeting if we can't find an agreement.
So that's exactly what's happened, so.
You want to avoid that, yeah.
How did the affordable housing money get put into the CPC in the first place?
It's un- under the statute.
State law.
Yeah, so you vote. There's an administrative set of articles that we vote on before we get into the projects, and they know what's come in, and then so they basically divide it up into the buckets it has to go in. Um, and so, you know, they know what's come in for the previous year, they know what the surtax was, they know what state match is, so they know the money that has to be put in the bucket, so they do a set of articles saying 10% goes here, 20% goes here, so they, 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 they do that. So we vote on that every single town meeting. Does every community in the state of Massachusetts have the same problem that we're having? As far as trying to get the money? I'm not sure.
Some, some do. There was one of, someone here circulated an article about, uh, that there are other Massachusetts communities that are, have the same problem.
Yeah.
So if we had our druthers, we'd have a vote that just says, going forward, all the money in this bucket goes right to the Affordable House Trust Fund.
But again, the, the simple way to avoid the, the issue is if you have the right language in the article for the warrant at town meeting.
But Jay can't convince CPC to do that, that's the problem. CPC changes it.
But if CPC were, if CPC did agree to that, that would make it simple.
Well, I think we're making progress there.
I think we are.
I did have, I did have a very good discussion with Ben, you see, he wants to be a partner.
Yep.
Yep. So that's where we are, so I'll keep everybody posted. Carla has done a great job with this. So I've got the report drafted. She's going to review it as far as what needs to go to the state. We get it, and then we send it to CPC and say, "We did what we're supposed to do." So now we want the rest of this money released that was previously approved.
Yeah.
And they've told us more than once, that's all we have to do.
All right. And then, I mean, it also is something we should consider with, um, some of these other appointments for CPC Housing Authority rep, the other at-large rep.
Yep.
Make sure they're educated up front.
Amen.
Yes.
Yep, exactly. And again, Kathy, just to reinforce, it's my understanding that the state's interest is to make sure that the CPC money is spent correctly.
Yeah.
And so, and I think we've been doing that, it's just a matter of reporting and convincing them that we have the records and we're doing it correctly, and that should be pretty straightforward.
Well, while we're on this subject, um, I want to know whether there's, uh, people have the stomach for revisiting Five Quarterville Road and the Affordable, and to hold a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to consider it.
And what would you want to do?
Um, acquire.
Well, we were told by their attorney that we, you know, there really is a offer and acceptance so that we would be considered interfering. Um, she was going to keep us posted if some, if it fell through. She, she's, she's Northborough, but, um, she definitely said, we, you know, we asked if we could, and she said, "No."
She knows that, uh, yeah, we're interested.
Okay.
She, she represents us, you know, the state. Um, and she herself is involved, I don't know if she's on the select board or Northboard, but she's involved, so she understood what we wanted to do, and so it's not, I'm not going to say she's on our side, but she was very sympathetic for what we were trying to do. So she said she would let us know if, um, she felt there's an opportunity for us to step in, but she absolutely said we would, um, and Jay also said so.
Yeah, you can't interfere.
Uh, I, I understand. I, I...
October is the date that these, the nine-month demolition delay...
Right.
...ends. But it looks like they're holding out for it, I mean. So, basically, the main reason to get these monies transferred in the beginning is that when a property like Five Quarterville comes up, we're able to purchase it and save it rather than losing it because we can't get to town meeting in time to get the money.
And also, it's...
Exactly.
I think it's almost just morally wrong that this money was appropriated for this purpose and just, it's just tied up in bureaucracy not being used for that purpose.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so there's nothing to vote on yet, it's just making some progress.
No, we discussed the report, and I don't think we need to vote on the report. The report's just got to go in, it's a factual thing.
All right. Um, so I think we're on, we're making good time here. Um, I would like to take a brief recess for, uh, mid-meeting recess. About five minutes?
I'm good.
All right, ready? Okay. The next item on our agenda is prove new public comment policy. So we've rescinded the old unconstitutional policy and the draft policy that was in the packet. This is a version of a public comment policy that Jay Tallerman's firm put together after that decision as kind of a template for other municipalities. We had talked about it and made some tweaks to it, I think. I mean, I know I wrote down some potential comments. Does anyone want to start the discussion here? Marguerite?
I'll do first. I'm also glad for clarity.
I'm happy to start. I mean, for me, the value is not getting dragged down into the weeds. I think the critical thing is that we have a reasonable policy. I'm not eager to argue about nits and nets and wording. I think this is close enough for me, and I'm also open to, you know, changes or whatever, but I'd like to get it done and move on in something that is, you know, hopefully will stand up under legal scrutiny and provide what I think are reasonable guidelines for people. So I'm not eager to overthink this one and, you know, drag down into the details personally.
Okay, so you like the draft. It's already in there?
I'd vote to support it. I'd also vote to support other versions of this if people have good suggestions.
Okay. Kathy?
I'm with Sam on this one. I'm perfectly fine with this. There's a misspelling on the first page under first paragraph. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, permitted to peak. It should be speak. Other than that, that's my only comment. I think it's, I think this is well-written. You know, Andrew Pfaff and I went down to the annual, whatever the group is, that does finance in the state. So it was a finance committee meeting, advisory committee type meeting, but they got, or they had some town managers that talked and they all unanimously said, if I were you guys, I wouldn't even have public comment. That's where it was kind of going in that meeting, and there was just a lot of discussion. I didn't say a word. And of course, the decision had not been, was it? No, maybe it had been handed down. But anyway, so nobody brought up Southborough, but there's a lot of people that think you shouldn't even have public comment.
So, I mean, one suggestion I had is in paragraph one where it says, the chair or his/her designee shall devote a period at each meeting to public comment. I would just say may.
I'm happy with may.
Yep, works for me.
Okay, the other things that I had were really just nits that are not all that super important.
Mine was a bit.
You want me to go over them?
Sure.
So under three, where it says attorneys and agents who are permitted to speak must identify whom they represent, and I would say whom they represent for purposes of their public comment.
Yep.
And then under five, I don't think we need to, because this is a policy that is, that binds every board that is appointed by the select board. So I think a chair of a different board could have some more flexibility on five about if two people who are from an organization both wanted to speak to something, I mean, there's a, you could say that's okay. So I would say instead entities whose spokespersons are permitted to speak during the public comment period must identify themselves and the entity for which he or she is speaking, including his/her official position within said entity, et cetera, et cetera. So that they don't necessarily have to select a single spokesperson.
What is it you're changing?
Okay, five, you see that?
Yeah, I see five, but I'm not sure what you changed.
I'll show you.
Select a single spokesperson.
Entities whose spokesperson or spokespersons are permitted to speak must identify themselves and the entity. I mean, is there a situation where someone says, hi, I'm from the Southborough, Southborough gardeners or the Southborough, I'm trying to remember, the Southborough Organization for Schools. Does the chair absolutely have to have a strict rule, you can only let one person from?
I'd be fine with letting the chair determine whether it's one person or multiple people.
It's just, the rule, it should be the case that you can't say, I'm from the, like, Massachusetts citizens for, you know.
X, Y, Z, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Have ten people from that same organization basically make the same point.
The basic problem is if you're going to speak on behalf of an organization, you have to say, like, who you are, who you are, that's all, right?
Well, there's a difference between someone speaking on behalf of an organization and an individual speaking for themselves, and that seems like an awfully fine line.
Yeah, so that's where it says, we're entities who are permitted to speak. I mean, only people can speak, so that's why.
I'd almost drop the whole thing.
We could just take the whole thing out. I mean, it already says.
We can amend it if it becomes a problem.
Yeah, we could.
Just take the whole thing out?
Yeah.
Take out number five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fix it later if it's a problem.
Okay, so, just to review, I think, you have a comment?
Yes. Yes. This is a document to give legal protection to board members in the town, correct?
Yes.
Well, partly, but also give individuals an opportunity to.
To speak.
Do they understand the rules to?
My, I mean, I'm glad that that does that, but my question with it, for instance, there are a lot of terms that are obviously terms of art. For instance, the fourth thing you can't have, true threats, incitement to imminent lawless conduct, statements that were found by a court of law to be defamatory, and sexually explicit statements made to appeal to prurient interests. Now, I know true threat is a legal term, but if I'm Joe Schmo and I'm coming in off the street and I want to talk in a meeting, and I, and I see that these are the four things I cannot do, what's a true threat as opposed to, as opposed to, I mean, it's legal speak, do you see what I mean? I'm thinking of, do we need a separate one for people who are actually attending the meetings who aren't attorneys? I mean, I'm joking, but.
It's legal speak because the attorney wrote it.
Yeah, exactly. So, so can you yell in a, can you scream in a meeting?
Case law.
Yes.
Okay.
You can yell.
But what is a true threat, then? I mean.
Well, what this does is it allows the chair to say, to say, you know, that's enough and you're done.
That's a threat.
Yeah.
But, okay, put it this way.
But do you see my point?
Yes, but I'm just kind of deferring a little bit to Jay's.
I mean, I'll vote for this, but I'm just saying.
Expertise here, there, you know, there's other municipalities that are wrestling with the same thing. It should be the case where someone is so angry that the chair feels that there's a, you know, they say things that are truly threatening, that that should, the chair should have discretion to say, okay, I think this, I'm going to put it, I don't, I don't recognize you to speak anymore. I think that's what this covers.
I mean, at that point, you're probably going to call somebody else anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, statements that were found by a court of law to be defamatory, and in other words, someone else has said them and they've been judged defamatory?
Yes.
Yep.
That's, okay, but I'm just saying, this is, this will be good in a court of law, but sorting it out in an actual meeting may be more complex.
Absolutely.
This is, this is dealing with circumstances that are very, very, very unlikely.
But that may wind up in a court of law, which you got to protect yourself against, I think, so.
The alternative would be to have a more policy which is even more complicated, I think, defining these things. And it actually is pretty, like, a situation would be, you know, if there was, it means just what it says, if someone sued someone for defamation and there was a finding that what you said about that person is.
Defamatory.
Defamatory, you can't.
Okay, but, all right, I mean, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just saying in terms of, what an average person would say, it sounds like someone else previous to the meeting we're talking about had, had done that language and it had been judged defamatory, so now that, okay, but that's, that's not going to help for the conduct of meetings if someone considers.
It will help, though, if the chair, for example, understands the distinction there and can say, you violated, you know, section number five or whatever it is.
It's a big improvement, because the prior policy, the standard was rude, if something was rude.
Yeah.
That's even harder to define.
That's right.
Okay, well, I mean, I'll go with this, because I know it's probably very important to have, but I'm just.
There's no easy way to fix that, I guess.
So the changes that we had were, so for under one, instead of shall be may.
Yep.
Correct peak to speak, it's just a spelling thing.
Yep.
On three, at the end, attorneys and agents who are permitted to speak must identify whom they represent for purposes of their public comment, and we'll just eliminate five.
Yep.
Okay, so I move that we approve and adopt the public participation at meetings of public bodies policy with those amendments.
Second.
Oh, you've got a, there's a hand. So, okay, so we have motions been made and seconded.
Mr. Miller is.
All right.
Wants to speak.
But I think we can hear what Mr. Miller has to say.
Yeah.
All right. Please bring him over.
Hi, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
That's very kind of you, having made the motion and seconded, to allow me to public comment on this policy.
Well, it seemed if we're going to have a public comment policy, we should have some public comment on the.
Yeah, I, no, I definitely appreciate it. Hey, listen, I, I, I'm very much in support of what you're doing. I thought Andrew's amendments were spot-on. I think you're quite right to eliminate number, paragraph number five. If I can just offer the, here's my one very modest reservation, and I just want to throw it out to you to hear what you might think of it, because I've, I really appreciated the discussion up until this point. My concern was about the second sentence of the first numbered paragraph. That's the long sentence with the four semicolons and the typo that you've already moved to correct. And the concern is when it says, you know, this is the defining, essentially the chair's discretion in all matters, the point of the meeting at which the public comment period takes place, that's fine, the duration of the public comment period, the number of individuals and/or entities who are permitted to speak, which individuals and/or entities are permitted to speak, that's the part of it, that last part, that I personally find, I'm just, and again, I'm not sure about this, I just put it to you as a, as a, as a concern, because it seems that effectively that's giving license or cover for a board or committee chairperson to act in bad faith and to decide that I simply don't want to hear from any particular individual, and therefore, and under this policy, I've got the directive or the imprimatur to do so and to, and to discriminate or to refuse to allow a particular person to speak simply because I don't like them. And so I just, I just raise it as, as a possible concern that if it, as a statement of public policy, one that appears, again, to give room for a chair, and, you know, any chair that operated in bad faith hopefully wouldn't be reappointed, but it, it, it just gave me a certain amount of discomfort, and I just wanted to put it to you for your consideration.
Kevin, yeah, I, I hear your point, but I think that's just a matter of degree. I think that you could use any of those other points in that paragraph to discriminate against somebody, so, you know, you get two minutes, et cetera.
Yeah, that's true, and I guess I would be in favor, yeah, Sam, I guess I would be in favor, and I, you know, I, full disclosure, I believe, and I, you know, it's a little bit different for the select board, I think, than for some of the other boards and committees, you know, that are perhaps sometimes less controversial or that have less crowded agendas. I mean, I, you know, I understand, like, the need to move expeditiously, and I've been witness many times myself to where, you know, public comment sort of takes over and makes it very difficult for you folks to operate. My own position is that I'm very philosophically much in favor of public comment, however long it takes, because I think it's often the most interesting part of the meeting.
I, I think Kevin's got a point, and Sam, if you look at the last sentence, I think that negates what you just said. It says that everybody should get an equal amount of time.
Right, determine what the time is.
Well, yeah, so that, I'm okay with as long as everybody gets the same amount or whatever that is. So I, I think he's got a point here, it does, this, that one is more subjective than the others.
Right, I would just encourage you not to have language.
Which individuals are permitted to speak is hugely subjective.
So, you know, I guess I would be open to that, then, because the most common situation is just, the meeting is going on way too long, and the, the comment is just getting very repetitive.
Right.
Just like town moderator asked to, but it, that's pretty much covered by the number of individuals or entities who are permitted to speak.
Right, yeah. Again, my goal is to get it done, so I'm not, I wouldn't fight about it, but I wouldn't object to taking that out.
You would not object to?
Would not object, I would keep it in, but to keep it moving.
I wouldn't object to either taking it out.
Okay, so I guess I've been convinced that.
I'd leave it in, because that's what board chairs do. They pick on the people who are not allowed to speak, that's, I mean, it's fact of life.
So you'd like it to come out, is that what you're saying?
Leave it in, she said.
Leave it in?
Yeah.
I'll take it out.
Yeah, I would take it out, but it sounds like it's out, then.
All right. I'm thinking how to do this.
Three and a half to one and a half.
Yeah.
So withdraw the motion?
Okay, yeah, how about this, I'm going to withdraw the motion, then I need. I move that we approve the draft policy in the packet on, with the following changes. On one, change shall to may, take out the clause which says which individuals and/or entities are permitted to speak, correct the peak to speak, add the additional language to number three that I had suggested, and remove number five.
Second.
All, all those in favor? All those opposed?
All right. Without a, without a policy for an hour here, so we've made it back into sheltered positions.
Good job.
Good work.
The next one, you see in the packet, I got a letter from the Metro West Regional Transit Authority, which basically says, as the chair, you are drafted into being on.
Not quite. Yeah, you can, your designee can do it, actually.
We approve.
You are, you are by default on the WRA.
In fact, they list Mr. Healy still as the representative, so.
There you go.
You're, you're safe for a little while.
Okay. Does anyone else want to be on the Metro West Regional Transit Authority? I don't think.
Would it make your life easier if someone else did it?
It has to be a select one, right?
No, it doesn't have to be, it said, or designee, I looked at the state law for this, so it said designee.
I mean, someone that really, I've never taken the Metro West.
The ride stuff, yeah.
But, I mean, does anyone know of anyone who would be better suited to do this, or?
Don't know, I guess I would make the point that this is actually an interesting thing in the sense, one of the things we've struggled with is finding sort of transportation within the town. These guys have this route number seven that goes through the town, but it doesn't really do the transit, the T station up to the business community, for example, on that process. So it'd be great to find ways to get some funding or resources to improve that network, not that there's a great chance that we could do that, but at least having someone sit on these discussions and say, hey, we'd like this in Southborough would be interesting.
Sounds like maybe you would be.
I'm interested in the concept, but I don't have a lot of bandwidth. I mean, if nobody wants to do it, I guess I would volunteer, but I'm not.
Cause you go, volunteered.
Four meetings.
You volunteered, four meetings a year. You volunteered.
You, you know, you're doing a valuable contribution on WRA.
Well, not necessarily valuable directly to the town, but, but again, I think this is an interesting thing. I, I, you know, if somebody else wants to do it, folks, I would be happy to.
If you'll do it for this year.
I'll do it, yeah, okay.
I'll do it next year, how about that?
Okay.
Do it for a year.
Okay.
And then we'll, we'll just try to switch off.
Okay.
I mean, the things they said you have to do, appoint an administrator, approve a budget.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want me to make the motion?
Be my guest.
I move that the select board appoint, okay, do we need a term for this? Move that.
Just until further notice.
Okay. I move that the select board appoint Sam Stivers to be our representative to the Metro West Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'd even vote for myself.
All those opposed?
Now that this is done.
No.
So, we, I hired, I had a new employee start today, and she takes commuter rail out. She has no way to get to her office, right? And you know where my office is, you know where that is, so we're having, we're going to pay for Uber to get her back and forth, what else to do? So, there, it is a problem that, that last small that we've heard John Woodenos talk about as far as getting people from the train station to where they're supposed to go.
Yep. Okay, so now we're getting into the last part of our agenda, and these items are kind of interrelated, so we've got the goals spreadsheet that put in who kind of wanted to do what. Some of them, a very small number of them, did not get.
Yeah, but pretty small, though.
Yeah.
We had many more vacancies last year with this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I went through and I found about eighty percent of them, I think, are okay with the list, and a couple, a few of them, we have to have multiple names, I think we ought to pick one or two people for them, but there are very few that are open, and, and there are some of them that are open that I think are sort of, they're going to happen anyway, we don't need a lot of.
Yep. Well, I'll just go explain kind of why I raised my hand for the ones I did. So, the one about the newsletter, you know, that's something that I had been talking with Vanessa about before, and it came out of the employee survey that we did, and that I, Lisa Brascio and I were the reps to that, so, and there was an interesting thing in the community advocate that caught my attention, where Wesboro was advertising the fact that he was beginning a new.
Which one, oh.
Newsletter.
Which one are you talking about?
Third one down.
Yeah, third one down.
Where they've got so many people.
No, no, that's Marguerite and Andrew, which I thought was right.
Public.
Yeah, I thought that was a good, a good pairing.
So why don't you just focus on the ones that have either nothing there or more than two?
Or a problem.
Okay, that's a good idea.
The next one had many people, I thought we need to actually.
Oh, regional dispatch, there's three?
Pick one or two, yeah.
The only, sorry, the only reason I put my name there is I'm glad to assist with the publicizing of, of anything, but I'm not really very good at the nuts and bolts of it.
Well, but again, I think it's helpful to have people to bounce ideas off of for how we do this conceptually, so.
I don't know, and the reason you can't do three is you got to, so you got to have two on any of these, or you got a problem with a meeting.
So I was happy with all the ones on this first page, except the one where it had three people for the public.
So who, that's Marguerite, Sam, and Al.
Al, yeah.
So I could go out of there if you want.
So Marguerite, let me just say this, what's going to be done here is probably more up Al and Sam's alley than yours as far as the initial part of it, because they need to do a deep dive into numbers and things, and then, as it goes on, maybe it's something you do step into as far as helping to, you know, present it to the community, which is what we're going to have to do, but I think that, I'm trying to save you some work here, I, you know, unless you're really deep into spreadsheets and stuff like these where, I think you probably want to maybe not do that one.
Thank you, yes, exactly.
Okay, so.
And the only other one that wasn't, didn't have somebody was the Oak Hill Truck Route.
Well, you know, I don't know, we need, I mentioned that one, but we just can't forget that that, you know, flag was not the problem.
Yep.
Oak Hill was, it's got fifty-one trucks going up and down at every. Oak Hill was. It's got fifty-one trucks going up and down every day, flying down that hill, going up the hill. So I think we just, I mean, I'm happy to put my name there, because I put it, I did it. Um, so just put me there for the moment.
Okay. I mean, I think it's also more broadly, we paid for that traffic study, VHB did. Look at the whole town, and-
Yeah.
They have their suggestions, or just, instead of just let it sit on the shelf, act on a couple of them.
Somebody to give these occasional nudge, which I think is-
Yeah. And this one's tough because of the Ashland problem.
Yep.
And, um, so I'm happy to, um, reengage with Greg and see what he says we can do with the Select Board, you know?
Okay, good. So on the second page, again, I thought we were generally pretty good. The second one about the, um, funding.
Ooh, of course. So I'll come off that one.
Funded, funded.
There's, there's plenty who, so-
I thought we ought to pick one there, maybe.
So I'll come off that one. I got plenty of financial stuff to do.
I'll come off too. Everybody will come off.
So Al and Andrew, you guys?
How do you feel?
Pardon?
Okay.
The pension one?
Yeah.
I mean, we could just, we could work together on it.
Yeah, I actually had a long discussion with my son about this. He's vice president of, uh, Artificial Intelligence at NASDAQ.
Oh, my goodness.
It's really about risk assessment, not really understanding the risks of our-
Well, but, but this one came out of a discussion for pension obligation bonds. And so, in fact, I think there are two elements. One is, uh, at least my proposal was that we actually get a special act to allow us to do that, which takes a year or so at least to do. And then-
Yeah, that's why I was-
The question is, do we actually then, uh, we need the analysis to say, does it make sense with a particular point in the interest rate cycle?
Because we have now a, um, a little bit of a model with the municipal voting age thing.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Where there, we, um, endorsed a special act, and then we work with our-
Our representative.
State representative to sponsor it. So, this is one where the other towns that have done this-
Yep.
Have done it. It's just, you, you got to do this before you can even do the math of it.
Analysis, yeah. So Arlington, for example, I got the, the special act that Arlington did. It was pretty simple. So getting something like that in the legislative pipeline, to me, is a parallel track with the analysis. So you, then you'd be ready when the interest rate cycle goes. We missed our-
I wish we just didn't. No, I wish we'd done it when they were so, I mean, there was so much, you know, you now wish it were done when they were lower, but, yeah. It is, and it, so you two are going to do that one?
Yeah, yeah. I'm good, I'm good with that.
We got a legal element and a-
I, I volunteer to do the one that's last, that has no one. Um, you can put me there, because it's already done.
Okay. And that's also a good, um, a little bit related is about-
I'm just joking. That was actually done, so it doesn't matter who puts me there.
Quarterly reviews, and-
How about the CPC one up there?
Before, before we move, before we move off that, Sam, that, um, for doing quarterly rev- this is a little bit related to that goal. For quarterly reviews, which we had been doing before, which we want to continue to do, um, does it make sense for Kathy to be our point person to work with Brian and Carla to coordinate getting the, keeping up with the quarterly reviews? Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so, and it's Andrew Pfaff, too, of advisory.
Yes.
Um, he's, he's integral to it. So I'd love to do that. Um, that one, I feel like is kind of right up my alley. So I'd love to replace Chelsea as far as the Select Board, um, person that does-
Another idea on that is, as part of that, it would also be helpful to, since we're making a priority about the CPC funds.
Yeah.
To just track, to see the spreadsheet that Carla put together, just keep a regular up, update on that. So we know at each, you know, this is the balance that are in some of these.
Yeah, keep the bucket, so we don't do that. But we did skip, Sam's right, we skipped the CPA, CPA, Certex one, so, um-
So we need to pick one or maybe two there.
Well, the CPC is a math thing, really, basically.
Well, no.
Well, that's, no, it's not. So I think you'd be a good one, that one, Marguerite.
It is communication.
Um, so I'd like to do that with Marguerite, Sam, if you'd let us.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's a big deal, because it is a tax increase.
That's right. So this is going to be a marketing job. Um, so no, this is not-
Could be, but if it's done right, it's not a tax increase. And that's a key communication problem.
That, that it pays back more than you-
Let's just call it what it is, please.
This is why I don't want Al to be on this, because I don't think you would. So, Marguerite, you do this one, please, um, with me. And Andrew Pfaff will work with us on this one, too.
And the DOR thing is sort of a no brainer.
I said, that's why I put my name there, because it's already done.
I volunteer for that.
I know, anybody, so it doesn't matter, but Marguerite doesn't really matter.
For the surcharge, who, who is our?
That's Marguerite and Kathy. So you're taking Sam out of that one.
Okay, all right.
And then the one with the blank, anybody can put their name there. It's already done. So, if anyone's credit, go for it.
Okay.
And then down below.
So we'll let Mark see who his favorite person is.
The next interesting one is abolish the Public Works Planning Board. That is also something that would require a special act, and, okay, that's one that I put as a goal, and I just want to be very clear. That is not to say no to the concept of any type of a future advisory committee to help the DPW, including of things like, recycling and, and, and things like that. But it's just, the structure of this is so weird.
Yep.
Yep. I, I think we ought to be making it, um, a policy that we ought to be trying to simplify the lines of authority. You know, we, we, we just had a, a tree hearing, which, you know, has got, you know, multiple committees that have to all pine. And, you know, here we have-
Over two committees.
The, the DPW is, uh, is, is our responsibility, but we have a planning board that's-
The, on the tree hearing thing, that's really, that's a function of what roads are designated as scenic roads. That's what multiplies the number of these.
Yep.
Well, we might want to talk about that at a later date.
So, we've all agreed that we want to strive to do this, right?
Yeah.
So, one person just needs to say, okay, let the other two do it.
Yep.
All right, so the first step is just to have a vote at time.
So Sam, just, so you are on the, you are on the-
I'm voting to abolish myself, yes.
You're going to get it on the board. That's your job.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, but you need, you need to find the right language.
Yep.
I'm happy to withdraw from that one.
I'm happy to withdraw, actually.
I'll, I'll, um-
That's probably one-
You're doing away with committees is something I'm pleased to do.
My sense is you're more, more focused on this.
So, that's yours, Al.
Okay.
Hey, Andrew, can we back up to the prior page? There's stuff at the bottom that we didn't talk about.
Okay.
That I think is worth keeping on the radars.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'm okay with the first one, and then, uh-
So the build a model of dispatch options, that's kind of-
We've already done that.
Yeah.
That's on the first page. And I thought Kathy might be interested in the ARPA funds.
Well, I'm keeping the spreadsheet, so that's easy, easy. Just put me there.
Okay.
That one's easy.
And then the, um-
I'd get rid of that one, because we're, we're already, I'm already doing this.
Probably a projection? Okay, we can bag that one, too. Okay, good.
You taking another one that's already done?
No, that one's not done yet, Al, but it's on there twice.
We're eradicating it.
So the updated five-year projection of-
Oh, wait a minute. Where is the five-year projection?
Bottom of the page.
It's ten years. Wait a minute. Where's my ten-year one?
Oh, I get it, I get it.
The ones on the bottom, not the ones at the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. So get rid of that one, because we're, we're doing the ten-year one.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to get closure on all these things.
Yeah, so Mark, so get rid of everything.
So no, no one volunteered for enhanced tra- staff training? Um, I, I can raise my hand for that. I mean, the dilemma has always just been of identifying the type of training that people want to do, right?
So there's your partner right there.
Yeah. I mean, I think one way to think about it is, um, you, like, we get these, um, each department submits a budget, and then there's a lineup. Each department has this relatively small amount of money. I mean, it's useful to just, maybe, like, in the next budget cycle, we just get some more information about how that was actually used, and what are things that people like? Are there things, like, I guess I'm, I'm now more thinking about things like kind of conferences as training, instead of, um,
Or individual.
You know, like off-site type of training, but, I don't know. Well, well, I'm happy to work with Vanessa on it.
Okay. All right, that's got that page in, right?
Yep.
I mean, because, um, MMA definitely has some really interesting, um, trainings. All right, there's a lot of, I see two multiple ones for community-
The first two, yeah.
Okay, so for the-
The first one, the first part's easier. We already talked about that tonight. That's kind of easy, um, I think. The next part's not so easy.
So for the 120 Turnpike Road, I, I would like to stay on that, maybe with someone, because I've already kind of-
Al and Kathy? Or, excuse me, Andrew and Kathy, because you guys have been talking about it, yeah.
All right, um-
What about the first one up there, the affordable-
Yeah, somebody needs to come off that one. Um, I'm happy to come off of it, um, and let Marguerite and-
I think there is a communication aspect of that, certainly, that Marguerite has expressed interest in.
Because we're talking about getting rid, uh, you know, really truly, um, um, reformatting CHOPS and that, so that's, that's a big deal, so.
And getting public support.
Which one is that?
This is-
That's the first one on-
Affordable Housing Development.
Because you're taking me off that one.
Yep. Kathy goes off it now.
Okay, thank you.
And then at the bottom, there's planned support for increasing senior population. We can- That might, that might have been mine. I can't remember.
It was definitely part of yours.
And educate residents about affordable housing. We're really doing that and the thing above, so.
Yes, I'd get rid of that one.
Get rid of that one.
And then Sam, you want to do the plan?
Yeah, I'll work on that.
Are we now moving to the infrastructure page?
Yep.
And I thought we were okay on the top part of that.
Yeah, that's, um, on a different one. You and I are on it. Ooh, okay. Fully staffed by the end of October.
On that page, we've got the facilities.
What do we, what do we decide for the first one under, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Community Development?
Oh, I, I did it. That's good.
I know, this was the, yeah.
Looks like you're on it with Kathy?
Okay.
And there, there's already, CIPC is already, like, well into the process. It's just-
And then the second one for 120 is you and Kathy?
Is Al and Kathy, or Andrew, Andrew.
Now, wait a minute. The first one is Marguerite and Al. So the Affordable Housing Development, that's Marguerite and Al. And the second one, which is 120, is Andrew and Kathy.
And then I'm on the first one on the bottom, and we omitted, eliminated the second one on the bottom here, for Community Development.
The, are you talking about the additional task stuff, or?
The additional task is the bottom one.
I, I view that as kind of like optional stuff.
This stuff is going to happen, anyway. We're going to, he's already starting to install the streetlights. We will have to deal with Flag School when historic, when the Storm Society moves out.
Well, the IMA for Algonquin.
We got to make sure that gets done, Mark. But that's really not us. That's really regional that's got to get it done. So we just got to make sure they do it.
We've named a pocket park, and we're working on it. Got a recommendation.
Yep. So those, I think, are in pretty good shape without putting anybody on.
Flag School probably could use some-
Well, Capitol's going to deal with it first and come to us.
And streetlights are going to happen, so.
They're already happening.
Maybe less focus needed there, so. And that's it, right?
Okay. Um, so then the next, this is a good segue then into discussion of town administrator goals. So, um, I'll let Mark chime in here, too, because I know when, when you did your self-evaluation, you identified two. So, please correct me if I'm wrong, you know, in, um, the, Mark's current contract, there's a performance evaluation aspect of it, where we set, we work with Mark to set goals, and then with the goal of a year from now, um, talking about those in the performance evaluation, and you suggest two, and then we suggest two. So, I don't, what were, what were your two suggested ones, again?
So I think the two that I had listed, um, one was, um, it, it's an effort that is somewhat, it was starting to begin it with, with Personnel Board, in terms of the employee handbook. Um, according to the SAP bylaw, Personnel Board has the right to promulgate rules and regulations in accordance with the, um, the authority given to them by the bylaw. And, um, you know, as you know, that, that personnel is kind of a fluid thing. Um, it's not easy to try to be adaptive to things as they happen, when you can only change a bylaw, um, once a year, or once every tw- you know, or twice a year. And, um, so the board is taking a look at, in the employee handbook, um, you know, they want to, uh, establish some of the things that are in the bylaw as, um, rules and regulations, uh, and then look to, um, to try to slim down that, that bylaw a little bit, um, over the, over the course of the next year or so. Um, so that's one of the efforts, you know, working with, uh, with Labor Council, with Personnel Board to achieve that. I think, um, employee handbook was also something, um, that was a Select Board goal, um, last time around, time before, um, and, and it was something that just really, you know, it never gotten done. The second one is something that, uh, is, is on your goals, um, which is the financial and the policy review with the Department of, um, of, um, DLS, uh, for Department of Revenue. Um, that's going to be, um, a fairly substantive process, given that, um, it's going to involve, um, you know, coordinating with a lot of different groups in reviewing these policies and, um, uh, and, and getting that management study and the financial study done. So those are the two that I would suggest, um, you know, for my goals, and then obviously, um, interested as to what the board would want to, you know, would want to add.
Right. Um, who wants to go first? Kathy?
I'll go first. So I think I've got three here. Um, so the first one is, Mark, um, we think we have hired, um, we're all cautiously optimistic that we have a really good DPW head coming July twenty-fourth, right? So one of the goals that I'd like to see set tonight is that we basically charge you with his successful integration, um, so that he gets off to a really good start. Um, you know, we really have a plan for him. We, you know, have a list before he gets here as far as projects, et cetera, but you're in charge of that. Um, you know, I think you've got a great relationship with Chief Achilles and Chief Newell. Um, you know, this is the third of the big three departments, so, um-
Seems, it seems that's a, you know, we're integrating somebody every year.
Yeah. But, um, you know, you're really key to getting this to work, right? Um, you two need to work really well together, so that's number one. Number two, um, IT, MTC, um, I want to task you with, by the time we sit here a year from now, that we have, um, truly found a way to use the best of both, that we really have a cohesive, healthy, positive relationship between MPC. Um, and I think that means getting to know those guys, understanding their talents, and making sure that we really use those, use them to the max. But specifically, a year from now, having either moved to the cloud, or at least having specific plans in place to complete the move. We've been talking about it for about three years now, so it's time to get that part done. Um, and if we need more resources, you're just going to have to tell us, any more resources. Jay needs more help to get it done, whatever you need. But I think we've really got to say, we need to get to the cloud. Um, I think, you're, you're on the cloud with your business?
I am.
Yep.
Um, your law firm probably is. So it just, you know, we're way behind this, so we need to get that part done. So that's, that's number two. Um, and number three is
And number three is to work with me on what I call this agile-like system, to have a way that we know, the Select Board has a way to check and know what's going on, we've got our projects someplace, so we can look, we know what the status is at any time, and we don't have to keep calling you to say, where do things stand, like we do now, all five of us call you and, 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 so I think it's going to save you time too, so.
But I enjoy those conversations.
Well, I know you do, but, you know, it's kind of like when someone tells me they love still going to a bank and seeing the teller, right? You're going, really?
Wait a minute, I like those tellers.
Okay, all right.
Do you know how many people, do you know how many people come in to the townhouse just to see David?
I do know, I do know some people like to walk in and pay their tax bills, whatever.
People go to transfer stations.
Okay, so to each his own, right? But I'd like you to have more time to do other things, and so I do know someone who's doing the very same thing that I'm talking about with the town, coincidentally. So I want you to work with me on that, that's, that's my goal, I'm signed to that goal. So that's, that's my three proposed goals for this year for you.
Sam?
I have a list.
Okay, but.
I, I know, I got it.
Is it double-digit?
Actually, it is, but I will, I will carve it down. I, I agree with Kathy, I think, again, the integration of the DPW superintendent is critical. And I think that the technology integration coordination is also critical. We've got a fantastic resource there in the MTC. And finding a way to leverage that and taking advantage of that knowledge, I think, is a huge advantage that we have that most places don't have, frankly. And we couldn't pay those guys to do what they do for us. So it seems to me that that's a critical one, and I would, I would suggest that, that MTC Chair has a strong input in terms of success or not in terms of this metric going forward. So I think that one goes beyond us in terms of evaluation process. And I like the, the tracking thing in the sense that that gives an opportunity, I think, to be able to also track the goals that we have here. Because I look at what we're doing with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, we've got a spreadsheet there that at least in theory tracks status for the master plan goals in terms of what's happening, who's responsible for what next milestones, what's going to happen, et cetera. It is not fully functional yet, but the concept, I think, is a good one, is a communication device to what's going on, so. And if we have that structure that Kathy is talking about, you can actually use it for a variety of different things, all the way from things like letters that come in from, from constituents, from residents here. I see a lot of that stuff, I have very little insight in terms of, you know, how those are resolved. I'm hoping that we're following up on those things, sometimes I hear we're not, sometimes I hear we are. It'd be great not only for an internal process, but for residents to be able to look in and say, this, this letter was, expressed concern about this, and here's what happened with it, and so on and so forth. So that kind, that kind of structure, I think, can be very valuable. And the other category that I had is, is, has got a lot of potential pieces to it, and I guess I would be interested in Mark's thoughts about this. But it seems to me, I, I look to Town Administrator to take the lead in, in a big item somewhere or other. And that could be something like, I mean, a more general one, I know that Marguerite has talked about a lot, and overall communication with the public. Because it's a two-way street, people have to listen, but as folks know, I spend a fair amount of time at the transfer station listening to people. I'm stunned by how many people have no clue about what's going on in town, for the most part. I mean, there's, there's the usual suspects who are pretty well informed, but I get questions ranging from, you know, what's the Select Board? To, you know, other kind of things about, you know, what's happening with the pile of dirt at the corner of St. Mark's Street and Cordova Road. But, but again, some better way to, and we, we do work with Twitter and Facebook and so forth kind of things, but I don't know. I, I think there's got to be a better way to communicate more generally with people, I don't know what the answer is there.
That's part of the idea of the newsletter item, right? Is, is it internal, is it external, or is it both? And then you'd have to have a realistic schedule of, you know.
We don't want to, we don't want to create a position that takes 10 people to actually manage that and, you know, spend full time doing it. But there, I hope there are better ways to actually do that more universally, maybe not.
Well, one good example is, you know, when Karen sent out that.
Yeah, the DPW postcard, yeah.
Everyone thought it was great, you know, things like that.
And the electric rate postcard that went out, that was hugely impacted, I had many people say, wow, that's great, I'm so happy that the town did that, that saved me a lot of money. But that's, you know, a very specific thing versus more general stuff. And other, other groups, the senior center sends out a lot of communications that are very helpful to people. But if there are a better way to do that, and there may not be an easy way to do that, I don't know. That leads into another one for me, is more of a customer service kind of implementation as far as, as getting feedback from the public and thinking about what kind of metrics we want to use to determine, are we actually, you know, a, an organization that people look at and say, wow, these folks communicate with us, they give us information, they, when I come into the townhouse and I get, I see that a lot, I mean, I think we do a good job of customer service in many areas. And so being able to track that and report on it, I think, is something a lot of organizations focus on. Another possible, and I'm, I'm sort of throwing out a list here of candidates for this, and I'm not suggesting that all of them need to be done, but I think it'd be great if we could pick one of these and think about it. Integration streamlining the town's permitting process, we've been talking about that for years. And again, there are certain problems with that, but I think that, that's a place where, that could benefit a lot of development work around town that people, a lot of people care about. We talk, the grant stuff is on my list, we've talked about that, so. See anything else here that's worthy, worthy of it? Now, some of the other things I had, people have touched on. So again, to me, pick one where a Town Administrator can take the lead and actually make it happen on a, on a big issue that spans a lot of these areas here. I think that is of great value and could have a significant impact for the town overall. So I don't know how to put that on the list that Kathy had, I'm not sure which one I'd substitute if I had to substitute it, but.
So, Marguerite, Al, which one of you wants to go first here?
Okay, I, I only had, I only had two suggestions. One is to move to the cloud, I think that would save a lot of aggravation. And the other, again, the newsletter thing, every Friday when I get your one-page summary of what happened this week, it's so nice, I print them all out. And I save them. A, it's very personable, right? It's, it feels very friendly and personal and the, the tone is really good. And it sort of gives me a good sense of like, this is what happened this week, this is what happened this week. I love that. So what the, the school does a thing every Friday, every parent looks forward to it, just sort of a summary of what went on and what's going to happen. It's short, it doesn't have to have 100 pictures or gifs or anything like that. And it's, it's just maybe three paragraphs, and I think it would be, I wouldn't even say hire somebody to do it, I say you do it.
Post it on the website to get exposure to it.
Yeah, exactly, it's just, it's such a nice thing and it's such a, it kind of overcomes the chasm of, of there's the town government and there's everybody else. That's what I would do, I think it, you could be a SOEM.
Hugely, hugely helpful for me, I mean, we haven't had that in the past, I was never previously as informed about what's going on as a Select Board member as when I'm getting these kind of things. I would ask questions, I could ask questions and find out, but it's a great overview. And again, I think, Marguerite, I, what I hear you saying is maybe expanding that to take pieces of that or that concept and make it available to residents generally. Because those are the kind of questions I get frequently as I talk to people, so.
But you do do a good job on Friday, you can get it for us, it is well-written, and I think we look forward to it.
Yep.
So you know how to write well, and not, you know, too much, so you, you know how to do an interesting, this is what's happened, it's really good.
Yeah, I'm going to second Kathy's suggestions, and I think the, the communications piece, I think we need to move beyond sort of the, the passive, it's on the website, to really have more of a, a push system where, you know, we're actually pushing out information, you know, and I think there's, I think there's an MIS piece of that. So that, you know, you can push information to people who want particular types of information, whether it's, you know, construction that's going to happen on my street.
Yep.
Or, you know, I'm interested in what the fire department's doing, or, or the rec department.
So like as an example, I, I learned this from Tammy one time, is just a simple thing where DPW was doing it, that where you wanted to renew your transfer sticker, if you came in and walked in to do it, there, there's a form, and it did ask you, would you like to receive DPW updates? And if so, provide your, even, part of it is just getting people's email address, and now a lot of people are, you know, hesitant to give out their email address because you get so much spam, that's, that's a part of it. So that's to your point, there's a.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, there's no perfect solution, it's, but I think pushing the information out rather than making, you know, relying on people to find it is, is, is something that's important.
So I, I like the idea of, first of all, I think the goal should be pretty, you know, measurable, right? Some of them that are too kind of theoretical or conceptual or hard to measure, but here it's something we don't really have, and we do have it as one of our board goals of the, again, I just keep coming, I, I refer to it as the newsletter, but some regular form of communication. I guess here we're talking about an external communication of. Yeah, taking, taking kind of the internal updates we have and making it more just regular. All right, so is that something we think is all, if there's going to be two, that that should be one of them?
I would try it, I can't tell you how much when I see that in the inbox, I look forward to reading it, it's really wild.
Why are we just doing two?
Because I think that's in the term of the contract.
Literally?
It was two and two.
I like, I like three.
All right, well, let's look at.
What could they be?
Like I said, it's, it's up to you.
I think Kathy's do about the DPW and the technology, or keepers, and maybe add the communication piece to that.
The technology thing, this is something that's depends on funding and some other variables.
Not necessarily. Yeah. To some degree, it depends on funding, but again, simply using the expertise of the Technology Committee is the key point there. And it's not just the cloud, there are a variety of other things. Cybersecurity, for example, has been a hot topic. And I think there's been some differences of opinion between Jay and the Technology Committee about what needs to be done on some of that stuff. So somehow bringing those, those thoughts together to create consensus, I think, is, is the task on that.
I wrote down nine that we said, and I think four of them are really related, which is this idea of customer service, pushing information out, communicating better, and of course, that's one of the goals here that Andrew and Marguerite have been assigned, so it's all related. So that, to me, is one big goal that everybody seemed to want to try to see if we can find a way to do more than we currently do, so.
So just as a reference point, I'm looking at the, what I think is the operative.
Sillient.
Yeah. Annually, the Board and the Town Administrator shall mutually define the goals and objectives which they determine necessary for the proper operation of the town and the attainment of the Board's policy objectives. And shall further establish a general priority among those various goals and objectives reduced to writing. Goals shall be added by the end of every fiscal year for the following year as an appendix, which shall be an addendum to this agreement. I guess we didn't do it before the, we're close enough, we're close enough.
Yeah, but we didn't do it last year, so we're doing better.
And I looked, and I didn't see a requirement that it's four, but that in the, the model, when this first came, it was four. And, I mean, I, it also, it does say that we should kind of rank them a little bit.
Well, with that small a number, I don't feel compelled to rank particularly.
I would prefer to just stick to four, that's my own preference.
If I had to give up one of Kathy's, I'd give up the DPW integration then.
Oh, I wouldn't.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
I think that is so crucial.
I think technology and communication.
What we've been through the last few years, I think that was, technology, I think, is crucial. The agile thing, it's, it's goal here anyway, we're going to work on this, so it doesn't have to be Mark that.
But the communication and newsletters.
Yeah, so that, to me, is that, 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 all of you said that, so.
So that's already done?
I mean, I, you know, and I do agree that, you know, three of the, you know, I had, I had eight that I wrote down, and, and three of those do fall under the communication piece. So I think that, you know, that, that's obviously something that can be.
Of the goals that you had, I forget what.
He's the financial review that's going to be done, the DOR, so I'm fine taking that one off. I know you're going to be involved, Mark, but to me, that's more of a, maybe a Brian and a Carla. You'll be involved, but they've got to be really involved. So I, you know, yes, you're going to be involved, it's going to get done, but I'm not sure I would call that a goal.
I'm not sure I agree, but.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to push too hard.
It's up to Mark, you've got to choose his, yeah. So Kathy, what are you saying, we ought to have the, the?
I think we absolutely need the DPW super, number one, integration. And then the IT, the IT, I think, is so important to go to the next level, including specifically getting on the cloud.
And then the communication one is covered by our goals.
When you say getting on the cloud, is this, there are differences though about the public, public safety versus just, are you talking about like just our?
Anything.
Our information.
I don't want to get in the weeds as far as what are you going to do. We, we, we know that there may be, we were told that the dispatch stuff couldn't go to the cloud, I think that's changed now. And plus, the regionalization would change it anyway. So anything that can go to the cloud, without being specific, we should have a plan for by the year from now to either have that process started or at least have the plan solidified, we're ready to do it.
But the cloud is not the only dimension of that one.
No, we want IT, we want MTC to truly use their talents and get, find a way for Jay to really work with them and feel comfortable and secure so that relationship is really tight and we get the both, we get the best out of both.
I don't want to lose sight though of the external communication.
But that's already in our goals here. I think that is covered in a variety of ways through our goals, so I think we keep after that one collectively.
So if you're saying only four and you want to use Mark's two, right, so we only get two?
What I guess I'm going to drive in is I'm trying to, your two again were?
Personnel handbook.
Yep.
And the financial DOR review. And I said I'd rather that one not be there, but Mark wants it there, so I think that's his prerogative.
So then ours, I would go with the external newsletter and DPW, that's my own view, but I know you.
I'm not giving up on the IT one, I'm sorry, we've been talking about the cloud for, we've got to get this done. So I can't give up on that one. I don't see anything wrong with doing five, Andrew, just do five.
The other one Mark had was the employee handbook, is that, is that essential?
It's his choice, I think that's useful.
And that was a Select Board goal, you know, at, at one point, but again, this is, you know, the, the Personnel Board, you know, is, is, is favorable to looking to, you know, getting this done. We've started that process with Labor Council, and I think that this is beneficial for, you know, for, for allowing Personnel Board and, and me as the Personnel Director to be a little bit more nimble in responding to things instead of having to say, you know what, we got to wait another 11 months until we get to town meeting, until we can make that change in the bylaw, because we don't have the latitude to, to do what we, you know, what we should be able to do.
Or even wait till the next Personnel Board meeting to get an answer to a question.
Absolutely.
Operationally, most of the time.
Absolutely, so.
I think that's a good one.
Yeah, you know, look, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with five. If you want to, if you want to, you know, go with, you know, you want to go with the five, the two I have, the communications, the DPW and, you know, and the IT.
So is the goal for, for the IT thing like by the, by the end of the year, you know, develop a transition plan that is supported by?
Not even transition plan, operating policies that, that both MTC and Jay and Mark believe is working effectively. Take advantage of everybody's relative skills there to work together collaboratively.
The goal for MTC was always to be a resource to make the IT manager successful.
Right, and that's what we want, that's what we want.
And that's, you know, and that's what, you know, we've been, we've been working towards. I think, you know, we do have some financial resources that have been allocated through town meeting, you know, in the past year, you know, to start working towards the path for the cloud, but I, I think it, it, I do agree that we need to have something a little better defined and something with some more measurable, you know, timelines. So, you know, that, that absolutely makes sense, so.
So, that it?
You're doing it like this with the, I don't know.
No, no, sorry, no, sorry, I'm.
So, so it sounds like, are the five that we have, the Personnel Handbook?
I'll put them together.
Okay.
I'll send, you know, I'll send them out to everybody, yep.
All right, okay.
Yep.
Good.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is discussion of the proposed October 17, 2013, sorry, 2000.
Twenty-three.
Town meeting. Looks like Mark and team put together the list of the ideas that have been talked about so far, the potential.
Mark and his team have put together, just circulated to us, of the proposed articles for a special town meeting. I'll just read them, I know everyone's, they're in front of her, but just so everyone.
In no particular order.
Okay, these are, these are in no particular order. Establish a timeframe for the expiration of special permits to be in compliance with Mass. General Law, Section 9. um, section nine. Allow moderator to serve on ad hoc committees with town meeting approval. Allow moderator to serve on tricentennial committee. I guess those are, who
Paul Semino.
Paul Semino, okay. Article to address the format of town meeting. Who has proposed that, or is this just a
This is something I think that was discussed, um, you know, probably in the late stages of the last board. You know, currently, we have a town meeting on a Saturday.
One AM town meeting, yes.
We start, we start at, you know, one in the afternoon, we go until five, we take a break, we come back at seven, and we go to eleven. The crowd you have at one is never the same crowd you have at seven. Um, and, and trying to find a way to, I think streamline that process a little bit more. Again, it was something I think the board had, you know, had talked about, that board, not this board, um, but whether or not we wanna take a look at how we do, um, you know, I think everyone is pretty consolidated, you know, at the end of March, you know, on the Saturday, but do we wanna look at the structure of how the Saturday is set up?
Maybe start earlier, for example.
But, but that's something where no one has put together a draft, no one's put together a committee.
No.
But if you did, if you did something for a special town meeting, it's obviously a bylaw change. The bylaw would be approved by the attorney general, you'd have it in place to take effect for next annual. If you wait for the annual, then obviously you'd have
Wait a year, yeah.
Another year, correct.
All right, the next one, phase one funding, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for designated permitting for replacement of two Willow Street culverts, one has collapsed. Six, deferred repairs to fire tower, one hundred and ten K, and ambulance defibrillators, one hundred thousand dollars. Seven, update to sign bylaw, that's from planning, because in anticipation of this meeting, I reached out, first off, we reached out to every board to see whether anyone had ideas for potentially coming forward. Heard back from planning with update to sign bylaw and accessory apartments by right. Um, I think, and I don't wanna speak for her, but I think the chair didn't think either of those are so, you know, glaring that they would attract a lot of people to come to a, a meeting. Eight, repurposing current Lund Blatt engineering funds to construction fund to provide the required match for the Dog Park grant. Nine, creation of recreation facility maintenance revolving fund generated by field and facility permits. Ten, accessory apartments by right zoning. Eleven, appropriation of opiate settlement funds. There's nothing there that really stands out at you as something that is gonna generate a lot of excitement. And a lot of these things, although it would be nice to have them taken care of earlier or later, they do seem like things that would be possible consent agenda articles for a spring annual town meeting. I also talked to Jim earlier today, like ballpark was the cost to put together a fall time meeting. His view is at least twelve thousand dollars. It is in the budget to have two. So it's already budgeted, but it is, if you don't do it, you save twelve thousand dollars.
When, when do we have to decide this?
Kinda now.
Tonight.
Because, um
We don't meet again till August seventh.
Eighth. We, we would be, if we said we're gonna do it, we're committing to doing, we have to, we have, we're gonna have some irregular meetings and to get feedback from other boards, some of them are not gonna meet very frequently, particularly in August.
Yep.
So, you know, like with the model of the downtown, um, just, so the last fall time meeting was a little regular because there was already, the reason why it was scheduled was the tree bylaw, which was already put together. The one before it was for the downtown district, which took a long time, like, two years.
It had a lot of
And it was repeatedly delayed. It was, it was settled on November first, 'cause it was, was gonna be in October, and it was like pushed back to get more and more meetings to get a consensus on. So, there is a, there's just a lot of work that goes into having a productive meeting and I'm, I'm not inclined to do it, that's my view.
We also agreed
My question.
We weren't gonna use a special to do financial stuff, because the budgets already been passed. We've told the town what we think the estimated tax impact is of that budget. There's several things in here that would change that. Um, you know, Mr. Sibelli's still trying to get his one-one-twenty-three evaluations done. He's nowhere near done, I, I talked to him today. So I would certainly not support the ones on here that involve changing the budget for fiscal year twenty-four. I don't see anything in, in here that is going to, um, want people to come out. And yes, there's an out-of-pocket cost of twelve thousand bucks, but it's, to me, the time that it takes to put together a town meeting between Mr. Purple's time, all of our time, all these special meetings, we have to kinda stop everything and then focus on this, so I just don't see anything
Like, when we plan, okay, we, we put together this agenda, the next thing we do, put together a proposed agenda for the August meeting. I mean, what, it would be nice if we have a little bit of running room between now and starting a budget cycle, to start to some of these goals, start to think, okay, the August meeting, we're gonna pick off one of these goals and try to, someone comes back and gives a report on it, and we try, 'cause it, it takes work to
Well, how, how, how many of these are actually, I mean, if they're not reasonably well-developed at this point, then they're not ready for prime time.
I don't think any are well-developed.
No, I, I think that, I think that, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure where some of the ones are in terms of, you know, the accessory apartments. I know that's something that
Yeah, it's not far
That you were looking at, um, you know, I know the moderator, the ones that the moderator wanted, and I see he's in the audience. Um, I think those are fairly easy to put together. We've not talked specific about what we may wanna do with town meeting format. So, a, and again, then you get into the ones where you're talking about funding, so. Not a lot of, I'm not aware that it's much, that, that where we are beyond what's on the page in front of you tonight. So.
Okay, so then with that, does anyone else have any other information about potential articles?
Well, there's, would be the one to, um, start the process of eliminating the, uh, DPW advisory board, board.
Well, it's
But
Which is not, it's
It's not town meeting's job here. Well, uh, town meeting has to pass a request for, for a special legislation, I believe.
Uh, do they? Don't know.
I think Al's right, but
Al is right, okay.
Okay. I like the sound of that.
They need to, they need to give the select board the authority to petition the legislature. And then it's up to the board as to whether you're going to use that authority to actually do it.
There might be also a better idea of, like, by the spring, after Bill is on board, having a better idea of instead of just saying, we're gonna get rid of something, having another idea of what could be a way to
Yep.
Have some type of a sounding board.
Yeah, I, I don't see You know, there's, there's nothing to keep us from having a, a meeting in February, if You mean a special town meeting? A special town meeting in February, other than But that really gets Lizards. Yeah, messed up with the budget process, for example, and
We also had, in the goal-setting meeting, um, last year, one of the goals was have a fall time. It was to create a bylaw that was gonna require, and we talked about it, we started to draft it, there are some towns that that their bylaw requires you to have a fall time meeting, and Jay Talaman said, why are you doing this? You don't
Yeah, right.
You know.
I don't think there's enough to warrant it. I don't think you'd get very many people attending.
And it'd be a pretty, probably, you know, um, unrepresented group if you did.
Very small.
So, Mark, what do you think? You, the work is on you to get this done, so what do you think?
Well, I mean, beyond, um, beyond simply the cost, um, I think the other thing, just, you know, from, from consideration of, of my time and staff time, is that, you know, in September, we want to kick off our budget process.
Right, yeah.
We wanna kick off everything that, that's going on, and if we're trying to do that at the same time, we're trying to put together and finalize a warrant and get everything finalized and reviewed in committees and council and printing and, and the like, um, it does, it does make it a little cumbersome, so then you come out of October after the town meeting, and really, we should be further along in the process than we actually would be. Um, we did have a meeting the other day um, with, with the financial, um, with staff, with Brian and Carla, myself, um, Ms. Cook, and, and Andrew Pfaff, just to talk about, let's, let's set a process in place of how we're gonna do what we're gonna do for, for budget, um, so that we agree upfront. Um, I think that that is gonna, you know, trying to do that is gonna traipse a little bit on that process.
Yep. And I've always thought the concept for a special town meeting in the fall was to take something that is a big issue that was gonna take a lot of time and conversation out of the annual town meeting, so the annual town meeting could deal with the budget and, and other related issues there. So without that sort of, uh, you know, keystone event, if you will, for a special town meeting, that takes a lot of the value out of that process, I think, so.
So prior to me coming to Southborough, I remember when I got here, and I was like, okay, so when is your annual meeting? Well, it's in May. When's your fall meeting? We don't have fall meetings. We have one meeting a year, and then we got into the public safety, and then remember Steve Morielli became moderator, he had three town meetings in a year, in his only year as moderator, and
That's a perfect example of something that was huge.
Well, exactly, it was a lot of the big
You know, eighty-four Main Street, um, so those were big, big things.
But I think it gave people to start to think about, well, maybe we, you know, maybe we do have a fall meeting, we have, so I really think there needs to be, you know, a decision, do we wanna have one, you know, and, and do we wanna set up certain parameters around it? Or do we simply want to, I think has been expressed tonight, too, simply, you know, do special town meetings when you need them for, you know, significant issues.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have a significant issue coming up in the next year, which is the MWRA Communities Act.
MBTA.
Excuse, excuse me, the MBTA.
Yeah, and they're planning on doing that, um, in March, and if they need to have a special, if, if it doesn't work out in March, then they would have the fall back to have
Yeah.
So you're right, that's coming, but they, they're, they, they know they're not ready this fall for that.
Yep.
All right, so it sounds like there's a consensus to not have a fall time meeting in October, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think we need to take a formal vote on it, or, I don't, I don't think so, but
Trying to remember whether or not you took a formal vote to establish October seventeenth for a special town meeting.
I mean, there was a
We agreed to it.
I don't remember.
And if we voted.
So I'm not sure you need a I'm not sure you need a vote.
And should we do one, just to cover, to cover the bases?
Sure. It's belt and suspenders, as always.
You wanna make the motion, then?
Me?
Yes.
I, I move that we not have a special town meeting in the fall, the October seventeenth date that we established previously. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All of the post? All right, um, so we have come to the end of our agenda. The last item is public comment.
So, thought of letting you off the hook, but anyway, uh, Tim Lotwoodland Road, I just had a thought in terms of
Can you put the mic closer to you?
I, I had a thought in, in, in terms of your get rid of the Public Works Planning Board item. I really think you should take a broader look at the statute that was put in place to reorganize DPW and all that, because it doesn't make sense for you folks to be the tree warden, for example. So, I mean, I, I really think you should, you should take a broader view of, um, what should DPW look like and what changes do you have to make to that, because you wanna do it once, you don't wanna go to the legislature well multiple times.
So that, that the special act nineteen ninety-one had multiple components to it, one of them was that.
Right, but you also consolidated the cemetery and got rid of the water board and made the tree warden the select board and, you know, all that other stuff. And it just seems to me that if you're gonna go to the legislature and say, you know, I wanna get rid of this nuisance board that isn't working terribly well, you probably oughta also fix whatever else, um, you can.
Yep, good point.
All right, Mrs. Shimkus?
Thank you, Karen Shimkus, Limbrook Road. Um, I know if I was sitting in your seat, I would wanna know what I'm about to tell you. So, uh, and I would appreciate it, but, um, anyway, I wanted to go on record as a taxpayer and a resident uh, to let you know that there are possible issues, questions, and concerns with regard to the appraisals that were done with, on St. Mark's Triangle property. Um, I, as a professional appraiser and have been a past president of a multi-state professional appraisal organization, um, am acutely aware of the discipline and due diligence that needs to be done when doing this kind of work. It's very specialized. These appraisals were just done, just completed, and there is no awareness on the part of the public about, uh, these appraisals. Um, I'd like to know how this happened, that this certain individual was hired, um, and if there was any due diligence done, but I wanted to call your attention to the fact that he, um, apparently has been under disciplinary action by the state and lost his license for a while, suspended by the state and fined. Um, he was sued by the town of Peabody, so I don't know if you wanna speak with the mayor to see what happened there, but, um, you can certainly look at the local press. Um, generally speaking, when these types of, um, issues, uh, surface, um, it does raise questions and concerns about, uh, possibly about ability. Um, but under these circumstances, again, generally speaking, you would absolutely want a third-party, um, objective review. Um, it's, again, very specialized kind of valuation work. Um, I, having sit on top of the mountain for a while and am aware of who's out there appraising, would probably look to the qualifications of somebody who was a past president of, say, for instance, the International Right-Away. Uh, you know, they, it's a great organization and specializes in this kind of work. This is just suggestions and food for thought, but, you know, as someone who pined at town meeting, uh, if you're digging a hole, stop digging. And you certainly don't jump in the hole. Um, there's a lot to object to that I've already spoken to. Um, you know, the appraisals being done out of public eye, the public is not aware of the math. The PNS expired. I know as a voter, um, with no extension explicit, and, and as a real estate professional, commercial real estate professional, there's no extension language in the PNS, it expired. Now, I know you turned around and relied on town meeting authority, but I didn't authorize you to do that and to continue on, and I definitely wouldn't have voted for, for this deal. I would not have given legal authority as a voter to continue on. I would have fallen back on the position of the twenty-twenty-one town meeting, which is not granting permission. Um, it, this, to me, is a purely political project, unnecessary moving of a road, um.
And I know you've already said, said all those points.
But the town was billed for parking lot design before the project e- even was brought to the Board of Selectmen. I, I think that could have been a full year beforehand. So as a voter, and hopefully one of the more informed ones who tries to stay up to speed, and this is just sincere advice, um, you know, I would look at do the, all the proper due diligence first, you know, including whether or not this is a cemetery.
All right, thank you.
But anyway, you know, this, to me, is a tail wagging the dog situation on this deal, um, at the expense of public trust. And then the last point I wanted to make was, I, I understand there's some differences of opinion between this board and the planning board. Um, and you have town council behind that, and in my view, he's been weaponized unnecessarily. This has gotta end. They should have the right to have independent council and not be at the political will or whim of the Board of Selectmen. I'm sure you'd appreciate that if you were sitting on planning board with the tasks and job that they have to do. So, when you're mixing roads with kids, what's to stop a kid from running into these roads? You move, unnecessarily moved this road, made it closer to an intersection, okay, what's, what in the landscape does, no one sitting on these boards has any experience whatsoever in designing a park. So I, just because something's legal and Jay Talaman, which everyone, you know, has been turning to, says, I found a way, doesn't, common sense dictates common sense as the boss, you're the boss, right, of, of the council, um, you would say, wait a minute, maybe legally I can do it, but I shouldn't do it. It should be reviewed.
We, we, we try to keep these comments
Yes.
Three minutes here.
...three minutes, you're now a little over five minutes.
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to say that kind of summed it up?
Yes, I would say slow down.
Okay.
The minute I heard big R, little r, and that rationalization, that person would have been fired.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
One item, we received the, Margarita brought this to my attention, that there is an issue with contamination at the, no? Okay, okay.
All right.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Second?
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Motion, meeting adjourned, thank you.